And that has since been drained will be used for storm water, as you'll see on the plat. Then on the far right, you have some large mature trees that are clustered around the was at the eastern side of the property. So this is a this is the preliminary plat. This shows the layout of the lots, property boundaries, the streets, sidewalks, open space. One thing that differs slightly from the site plan that was approved is there was a continuation of this right of way that aligned with this street that has been shifted over to accommodate the Duke right of way. So that alignment has changed slightly. Right here, it was going this way. Now it comes over here. To bet to to meet the standards of Duke as far as crossing under their right of way. There's also a stub out to the south side here. This is oriented with east being up. So the south side here has a step out to this vacant land that was deemed appropriate for development by the DRC. And so that meets one of our standards as well. So this is a general overview of everything that's shown on the site plan. This is all the elements that are in place along with some screenshots of notes and diagrams from the plat. So going through all the standards of the subdivision ordinance, if it met all the standards, basically stated that. And those are found in black. This one, I will say, did they did meet the standards from DRC or 3.06? Subdivision name, there's a requirement that Henderson County confirmed that it's not duplicative. And so that's an item that will need to be confirmed if that hasn't been confirmed yet. But that can be something that's a part of the conditional approval to be handled at final plat. Dedication of public land. So that is a requirement that 500 square feet for every residential lot dedicated to the city. In this case, it'd be right at an acre of land. It is required to be its own separate parcel. And it has certain standards for what that land should look like, where it should be located, shaped, accessed, et cetera. In this case, the applicant has noted on their preliminary plat that they would do a fee in lieu, which is an option. A fee in lieu of dedication of parkland. Part of the reason for that was this information was pointed out to them pretty late in the process. So they had already done their preliminary plat staff was reviewing it and said, hey, we've got this provision for dedication of public parkland. And due to some of the standards, rather than figure out all the details of exactly where that land is going to be, they put the note that they would pay a fee in lieu so that they were at least addressing it in some way on the preliminary plat. Based on staff's analysis and some of the provisions in here, one of the hangups was that it needed to be accessed from a street and trail. But there is a provision, you see highlighted here, such access can be provided when when the dedicated land is adjacent to existing or proposed public parkland with street access. So in this case, the neighboring parcel here is owned by the city of Hendersonville, as is this one here. And there's a street right here that comes through and right of way that's all through here that abuts the city-owned parcel. So there is street access from an adjoining piece of public parkland. So staff is recommending that the dedication of public parkland actually be provided with a parcel of land totaling, you know, roughly one acre, 500 square feet per for residential lot in this location here so that it abuts and expands city-owned parkland. That would prevent that would free them from having to pay actually out of pocket a fee in lieu. And then they would dedicate that land to the city. So that's one area of detail that we would want to consider as part of a a motion for approval for this. The other item that sticks out here is the alignment of the stub out to the south here, this yellow. So I've overlaid approximately their screenshot of their plat. And it shows the street stubout coming right here, generally close to the corner of this adjacent vacant parcel. So that yellow circle is basically where it's meeting the the adjacent property. So staff has recommended that that alignment be shifted down so that it's more optimal for the future development of this parcel. Building a street is an expensive endeavor and the way that a street aligns obviously impacts how lots can be subdivided off of that. You have to have frontage on the street to create a lot. If you shift that down, then it allows potentially allows for lots, a single family lots on either side of a street that would be carried out through this property, potentially connecting over here or through some connection, future connection off of Duncan Hill Road. Could be multifamily, could have some type of internal circulation of, you know, private streets, something like that. But in either case, better alignment shifted down, we think would be more optimal for the future development. And all the other standards from Article Five are also met. So in general, they've addressed all the standards. There's some fine tuning that could be addressed with some conditions. And with that, we do have some public comments that were submitted. There was a letter and petition, signed petition by neighbors at Oklahua related to the connection. In this case, they're not being required to pave all the way to Strick Garden Lane. They're being required to create this right of way and pave up to the property line. But this part would remain unopened. The Strick Garden is open. Providence Walk is open. The stub is open, but no, no connection there at this time. That is public right of way. That's been dedicated to the city. So the city can make that connection at some point in the future. There was one other public comment. Franco Carrasco, 229 Strick Garden Lane. His comment was on the plans. It appears that elevation will be raised to that of Strick Garden Lane. We have a petition from the neighbors for that space to be left as is. City Council has approved that. However, we know that Providence Walk needs to connect with sewer line in Strick Garden. The question is, is Providence Walk going to grade everything to even the greenway to the same elevation? What happens to the power pole is recently put in place by Duke Power? Is Duke Power informed and are they okay with the change? How was Duke Power's access lane affected? A look at the site, it seems that a lot of dirt would be required to meet elevation. How is it going to affect water runoff and the neighbors on the either side? We can, some of these questions can be addressed by the developer. Those are the public comments we received. I will note that as an administrative hearing, no public comment is required as part of the administrative hearing. Administrative hearings are administrative decisions. They are not legislative decisions. Utilizing some guidance from the school of government, if you chose to do public comment, the guidance would be that the testimony or comments that they present evidence that will establish whether or not the application meets the standards in the ordinance. And it, this guidance says that you can limit all comments to that. You can you can guide speakers to keep their comments to that. And that repetitive, there's also no need to hear the same evidence repeated multiple times. Of course, have noted that time limits on presentations requiring groups of persons with common interest to designate a spokesperson. So you're not having repetitive comments. So I'll leave it up to your discretion on how you want to handle any public comment, noting that you do not have to have public comment. With that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Matthew. Does does anybody on the board have a question for city staff?
Could you show the the sidewalk detail again?
There is a cross section right here. Sidewalks. They're on one side. It's a little hard to see.
So there's a divider right off the curb.
Planter strip.
Okay, how wide is that strip? You tell? I guess it didn't. I've got it on my computer here. Look at it.
Two foot planter strip.
Okay. The other question was of this in lieu of, it sounded like we wanted them to not do in lieu of, but rather create that one acre.
Certainly seems to make sense since it's a but existing city-owned property and the floodway. And there's no, there's no plans for development in that area.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Go ahead, Neil.
Thank you. Um, the cut through to that was going through Oklahoma Village.
Oh, okay. To Strick Garden?
Yeah. You had, you said that would be paved to the plot line?
That's correct.
Why?
That is required by our subdivision ordinance.
Did not city council say no road here? No, I was watching the meeting. That was my impression.
No, so they have to meet the standards of the subdivision ordinance. City Council does not have the authority to override what's in the subdivision ordinance. So they were directed or given guidance by the city attorney that these stubouts have to be put in place. But you don't have to pave beyond the property line. So that's where the pavement would stop rather than be, so originally and during the rezoning phase, there was a connection all the way to Strick Garden Lane shown. And there was opposition to that. And the resolution was that they would not have to pay based on our subdivision ordinance, they would not have to pay pave beyond their property line, but up to the street. Same reason they're having to pave all the way here rather than just show a right of way. So that in the future, when those, when there maybe some development that wants to occur on the adjacent parcel, there is no question that a future road connection is there. It also has to be noted and is noted on the plat that this is for a future connection. Believe it is noted on this one as well. And then they're also required to put up a sign at the end of the street that says future road connection for subdivision ordinance. So kind of try to really announce it to folks. This stubout is going nowhere right now, but there is intention for it to connect in the future as part of the build out of the of the city's street network.
But conceivably, neither one would be built out in the future. We might have two paved stubs, as it were, going nowhere.
Conceivably, that is one potential outcome in the future. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. Fee in lieu of the dedicated land. And if that fee is paid, what happens to any dedication of land? There just is none. It's not going to be developed. It's just there.
Yeah, so it'd be the property owner's, you know, prerogative within the limitations of zoning and floodplain development and everything else, what would happen with that land?
And it's an acre?
It is one acre of land, roughly approximately 93 lots times 500 square feet. An acre is 43, 560. So it's right there in it.
I have a question. The packet that was sent to us, and of course, that was over a week ago, things might have changed. Shows this longer stubout swinging down. As you discussed, allowing for development on both sides of it.
The site plan.
The original, that was the original site plan?
That was, so this is the plat, the site plan that was approved did show that. And so that's, that's another.
Site plan that was approved by planning board and city council showed that.
Yeah, that was in your staff report.
Okay. But then the plat, the preliminary plat.
It got shifted up.
Got shifted up.
Yeah, that's actually.
We can ask Mr. Fowler about that. Any other questions?
That's, that's correct.
I've got a quick one here. Educate me, please. As I look at the resolution, is this an approval situation? Or is, is it like the one on Canuga a few months ago where the development near Appalachian Coffee where approval was really bad wording? It really should be, yes, it meets the legal requirements. It should be more of a check off.
That's right. It is a checklist of do they, are they compliant with the standards? So what I focused on this presentation is the, yes, they've addressed all the standards, but there are points that need fine tuning. And so you are looking, do they meet the standards? And if there is some fine tuning that needs to be done, any approval would address those as conditions.
Okay. It's, it's a word approval that I'm tripping over.
So this is the the approval of the preliminary plat. And so then the next step is good, good question. If this gets approved, then they would be able to begin their construction plans, meet with our engineers and our utility guys and do a pre-construction meeting. If the approvals to begin construction based on their construction plans, they go out, they start construction, construction plans meeting. They start to build the roads. They put in the utilities. All the public infrastructure gets put in place. It's inspected, meets all the standards of the city, meets all DOT standards, et cetera. So the construction is done. They then provide the city with a set of as-bills. So these are drawings of what actually got constructed. Those are reviewed and put in on file. Then once the as-bills are approved, they are able to submit a final plat, which is again reviewed by staff and only staff. We make sure that they continue to do everything they said they were going to do, everything that was approved by the planning board in the preliminary plat. And then in the creation of a homeowners association and some of these other standards that are applicable at the final plat stage rather than at the preliminary plat stage, we review all that. And if it is, meets all of our standards, we would approve that as staff administratively. They would then be able to go to record that final plat, start selling lots, start building vertically.
Good answer. Let me rephrase my question, please. I'm sorry. Excellent answer. That helps a lot. I voted against the Canuga proposal. And had to have a specific reason. And my real reason there was because the motion stated approve. And it really wasn't an approval because it was a by rights situation. And we basically had to confirm that the checklist was met. It wasn't approved, it wasn't denial.
Hey, Matt.
In with this, please.
Go ahead, Luke.
Neil, Neil, you're, you're, you're putting a fine point on a very good question. And and basically, I understand what you're saying, the sense that an approval is, you know, an approval of a project. The decision, there are, there, there, there is two decisions that we're talking about here. A rezoning decision is a legislative development decision, and it is exactly what you're talking about. It's the decision where the comprehensive plan is considered. There are guiding documents, but there are not hard standards that are used to determine whether or not a project is is meeting those. So in this, and this is a good instance of one preceding the other. So Providence Walk, this development went through a legislative process to rezone the property to permit the site plan, the density, the type of use. All of those decisions that are those broader planning-related decisions that a community has to make and which involve the public hearing, the public feedback, and at the end of the day, a decision that that brings in, you know, the, the, the the, the politics of the situation, the specifics of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance and pulls those together. So that is a legislative decision. And it is an approval or denial of a legislative decision. What you have before you today is still a decision, but it is an administrative decision. And so your discretion to make the decision is based purely on the subdivision ordinance. So in making the decision, approving or not, you have to base that entirely in the subdivision ordinance. So if the standards of the subdivision ordinance are being met, it's, it's much like when someone comes into this office and says, I want to build a deck on my backyard. Our decision in that process is administrative. We look at the zoning ordinance. Do they meet the setbacks? Is the, you know, do they have the space in the back of their yard? Is it allowed? Is it allowed use within that zoning district? If it checks those boxes, we can't say no. So we're granting approval of that request. And so you're similarly, I realize the approval language is maybe what is the hang up. But you are, you are basically making an administrative decision and and saying that this is, that this plan, which is seeking a preliminary plat approval, that this preliminary plat meets the standards of the subdivision ordinance. You're, you're saying that it either does or does not. So that I think, you know, just in terms of differentiating between the two, the legislative hearing is when you make a decision about whether somebody should be able to build single-family homes on this property in this layout. Once that decision is a, a yes or a no, but if it's a no, obviously it stops there. If it's a yes, then it, then the subdivision ordinance and the administrative decision is associated with applying the subdivision ordinance comes next. And that's where we are now. And and as an administrative decision, you basically don't have the same leeway to bring in other outside factors in making the, a decision about whether or not it meets the standards. I hope that helps. I know it's a little nuanced, but the planning board.
I was looking for nuance. I appreciate that voice from on high.
Sorry. Yeah, and I'm sorry I'm not there with you all today.
The short answer is yes, it is very similar to what, what happened out on Canuga. In that case, it was eight units.
The same. That was, that was a site plan. I mean, that was a plat approval.
But but because it was eight units, it was, it was a subdivision. And so the preliminary plat approval had to go before the board. And this is all fairly new to this board.
Yeah.
Because the new subdivision ordinance requires that preliminary plat approval administrative process has to go before the planning board.
Just wanted to make sure I know exactly what we could do.
Just to make sure that all the boxes are checked.
And and just one other note, you all, the city council does not make any administrative decisions. Their decisions are all legislative. So yours, you're unique in that role. You know, the, the other, while you cannot apply a different standard to the subdivision ordinance to a project that's in front of you, you can talk to staff on the back end about, hey, the subdivision ordinance is, you know, resulting in this in the subdivisions we're seeing, and I'm concerned about that. The changing the subdivision ordinance would be a legislative decision, and that would go to city council. So if you were to say, I don't like a standard in the subdivision ordinance that can be changed, but it has to then go through the legislative process. So the two talk to each other, but the idea is that administrative standards can be applied via this process. And it, 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 you know, limits the number of, you know, levels of review that go all the way to city council.
Thank you. And apologies to everybody for needing to be educated like that.
This is something the question.
Most of what you have in front of you that you are approving or making decisions on are legislative decisions and recommendations to city council. In this case, it's administrative, and this is the final board. So it is, I respect that, you know, the, the lens that you're viewing things or used to viewing things through the word approval feels different. In this case, it is like what you're describing, it's still an approval, but you're approving it through a different process, which is a stuff, has staff done an appropriate and thorough review? As the developer presented all the information and met all the standards and what they provided in a plat, those answers are yes, then you would approve. Or approve with conditions.
I will tell you that the subdivision ordinance is only about two years old.
Yeah, that was the first month I came on the board, actually, I think.
I was on the committee. There was a consultant that came from Raleigh, worked with us and, and he was the one that suggested this administrative review as a kind of, just to make sure that nothing was missed, all the boxes were checked. That's what this is all about.
Any other questions?
Just a, a comment, I guess. The, the stubouts you have in here, it seems to me that it's a potential public nuisance. I could see people dumping trash out there. I can see lovers lanes. I can see other illegal actions. It seems like we're requiring people to create a public nuisance. Has anybody thought about or blocking those stubs off or some?
I think it's completely circumstantial. So in some cases, that will not be the case. I think we'll see in the next one. A stubout is going to an amenity area for the neighborhood. So it's not always a situation that would maybe be a cause for concern. In this case, on the southern connection, the it is opening up into vacant land, this floodplain that's heavily wooded and, you know, there could be some of that potential. I'm sure there's already activity going on in that area that is not desirable. You just don't put eyes on it. I do believe that just by creating this neighborhood and the number of eyes and activity that's going to be right here is going to deter negative activity right down the street. If it is a concern, if there is a problem, if there's trespassing, littering, whatever that might be, this is a city street. And it would be the city's problem to deal with and handle. So if that road needed to be barricaded off or whatever it might be to prevent people from going down there, that would be something the city would have to address. And as I mentioned, there will be a, a sign for future road connection. Maybe that could be incorporated into something that's blocking the road to, from vehicular traffic going down there.
I would just think that especially the folks on the bottom half of another neighborhood, people are going to be in that area doing no good. And it's essentially in their backyard.
So I mean, this is just from my professional experience and research on the matter, but when you create environments where there are people within eyesight of an area, they, you know, downtown area that's vibrant and bustling. People who are up to bad are not going to go there and start, you know, doing something that they don't want to be seen doing. So the eyes on the street theory is actually a way of self policing. So if you can see something right from your backyard, the chances of somebody doing something there, you know, for any extended period of time, now you have, you know, bad things that happen very, you know, quickly, but it's not going to be a situation where someone's going to be setting up shop there to camp or something like that. They would be immediately seen and dealt with. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff, city staff?
Okay, I'll just mention something you might be interested in is something called SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And there's a lot of overlap between, you know, how you design a building or a campus or neighborhood or a city that is, is often trained, a lot of law enforcement officers are trained in this. And it crosses over to architectural design and it's, it's a really interesting set of concepts that go through, how do we, how do we, how we build places really reflects and the kind of activity we're going to get and receive. So I won't go all into it, but you might want to look into that a little bit. Sounds like it could be of interest to you.
CP.
SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, CPTED.
Thank you, Matthew. All right, at this point, we'll ask developer, Mr. Fowler. Or his representative, come on up.
Yeah, I just.
And talk about, talk about your preliminary plat.
My name is Michael. Go forth. I'm with High Country Engineering, representing Mr. Fowler here. Not really much more to say other than Um, not really much more to say other than um the three issues. I think there was three main things, the the stub out location. Um, what were the other two?
Dedication.
Dedication.
Land and the name, the name being approved by Henderson County.
We're, we're obviously going to work through Henderson County to make sure we get the street's name. There's no duplicate. We will agree to that condition. That's no problem. Um, the fee and lieu on the open space or or the dedication of this parcel down there that's adjacent to the city owned property. We'll work with the city to get what's best for the city on that, what they desire. Um, we're, we're definitely open to dedicating that parcel down there um for the open space requirement. Um, since it does meet the requirements of the city's own ordinance. Um, and then the location of this stub out, uh this much aligned stub out, uh, we're willing to work with the city on that. Um, as a design engineer, there's, you know, I can see that going both ways of, you know, the develop, the zoning of that parcel is C three. It's a highway business use as it stands right now. So um, you know, that, you know, where that location stub out is, we're willing to work with the city to make sure that that is amenable. So um, nothing really more to present on the project unless you have any additional questions for myself on that.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead, Neil. Well, go ahead, Neil.
Thank you um for the stub out and the other road that's now been shifted a bit.
Yes.
And Matt, I'm not sure if this would even fit the ordinance. But is there a chance if you're going to pave them, that it could be made out of permeable substances instead of laying down more asphalt and concrete for the next five, 10 years, whatever, until roads are built, if they're ever built?
It's a great question. I don't have the answer to. We'd be more than happy to work with staff to come up with a solution on that. I I don't have the answer to that. That would be something that Public Works would have to kind of weigh in on that. Is there anything in the subdivision ordinance?
Uh, uh, no, and Public Works would have to weigh in on it. Uh, it's not a bad idea because uh my understanding is that maintenance becomes an issue potentially. Uh, there's more maintenance required for um pervious or uh, yeah, pervious asphalt and pervious concrete. In this case, there's not going to be vehicular traffic driving down it. So that maintenance may get reduced. So um, there's the potential for that, and that would help, you know, the stormwater it is right next to the stormwater um detention area. So you might want to check the drainage on that, uh, the cost, all those things that they would have to consider.
I'm more than happy to kind of work through that at this point. And it's it's a become of the realization that it's going to be constructed. So uh, without, without barring other, other avenues.
Wha- whatever language that if you're considering that, uh, I would request that it not be stated in a way that it's a requirement for them to necessarily have to do it because we also need to confer with our Public Works if they'd be agreeable because this would be a s- a city street that the city would be responsible for ongoing maintenance.
Okay, I do have a a question. Um, and and it just maybe just clarifying that that you would be open to dedicating land at a rate of 500 square feet per lot. I'm showing 93 lots on the preliminary plat. Simple math, that's 46,500 square feet.
That's correct.
An acre of land is 43,000, so it's about 1.15 acres.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, the stub out. Um, and and again, it wasn't the preliminary plat that's been presented today, but on one of the plats that I'm looking at.
The original design did have it coming coming down the hill. Um, we moved it up. I I mean, the reason was it felt like it made it a little bit easier of a road to build, if you want to know the truth, because we would stay up higher on the parcel.
Right.
Alleviate, we've got a stream down there. So I mean, there were some other things that we were sort of looking through. We're amenable to moving that further down that property line and working with staff to come up with a proper distance, I guess.
Okay, and then the other one was just the final approval by Henderson County on the name. Can we go back to Franco Carrasco's concerns on the slide? Maybe you could address a couple of those just to so just to answer a few um their questions.
Yeah, so he's asked a question about um where the connection there is made. Um, and they do, there's a Duke power line that goes through there, a high voltage. It's got about a set big tower poles. And it's about a 70 foot right of way that spans both our property and portions of Strick, the the deer boundary lines of Strick Garden Lane. Um, so we shifted that while we've been working through this. We have sent the plans to Duke. We're waiting on them to confirm a time to meet out there and talk about it. So they are in review on that. Um, there's a big, there's a base of one of the poles that's right there. And that was the impetus for us to try and shift away from that. So that that's one reason. Secondly, the Duke's Duke's guidance on their right of way is they want perpendicular crossings. They don't want things to be askew in their crossings on that. So um, that is another reason why we shifted it down so that the right of way that was left there when Strick Garden Lane was recorded, it has a little bit of an arc to it. So that already dictated sort of, well, if there is going to be a city street, we've got to tie into that at adequate turns and adequate a radius that's adequate for the city standards on the city street. Um, so that's partial, the explain explanation for that being shifted. Now, yes, we're going to have to fill that area in um because we are accessing the sewer that's in Strick Garden Lane. Um, that has been the design, the sewer that's out in Strick Garden Lane. We are going to be tapping into that manhole and extending it down there. And we're going to have to fill that area in. Um, we're going to meet with Duke, they work through all those details with them um and figure out just how that's going to be done. Um, if there is some dirt, I don't, I don't want to quantify a lot of dirt. I don't know how much, I I don't know right off the top of my head. I believe it's, I believe it's in the order of four to five feet of dirt that's going to be placed through there. Um, it's gonna have to also be placed to satisfy a city street. So I mean, there's two competing interests there because um if you go to look where the right of way is left for Strick Garden Lane, it just tapers off to nothing there. And it's almost at a maybe a three to one slope or a two to one slope. That's not a suitable slope to build a road anyways. So we would have to build in road, bring in dirt to tie that in both vertically so that the the road has an adequate grade and a transition um between those two. So we're trying to meet several different things there. The water, we're not going to push the water off on the, any of the neighbors on Strick Garden. It's all going to stay back there onto uh the Duke power line and essentially be transported um along that rear property line through there.
Thank you.
Is that any other question?
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it would answer his question. Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, this point, we'll um, we'll go ahead and open public comment. If anybody would like to speak about the administrative hearing um on this preliminary plat review. You come up to the podium and state your name and address and tell us, um, tell us.
Is this from the city attorney? So I've got a, um, here, can you go address this?
So when we talked about public comments earlier, I just wanted to confirm or we all want, staff wanted to confirm with the city attorney. Um, so public comments in administrative hearing setting are open to anyone who is substantially impacted and can present evidence as to why they, this subdivision or this proposed um preliminary site plan does not meet the subdivision ordinance. So that's what the comments can be limited to. Um, however, it is the planning board's discretion if they do want to open it up to outside of that limitation.
Excellent, thank you. So ju- just like um we heard from Alex just now, your your comments need to tie the subdivision ordinance to the preliminary plat. And if you have comments that can do that, then we'll be glad to hear them. And if you'll state your name and address.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. The issue is correspondence to the site plan as approved by council. Because um the the Mr. Carrasco referred to a petition that was agreed to by the neighborhood and the developer about no uh connection between Providence Walk and the neighborhood and that the right of way would remain as it is. And you've just heard, it is going to be altered. And you're going to, you're going to raise the elevation, but it put a structure in the right of way to 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 even out the the elevations. And that is going to have an impact. That's a structure that's not in the site plan. That is not in the site plan that was approved. And council was concerned about uh the issues of maintenance and constructing that on the the city property. And like the impacts that would occur. And there's an issue with stormwater because it goes along the property, the adjacent property owner. So if you're putting a earthen structure, whatever, then you have a block. It's going to get issues. And this is what some of the neighbors were concerned about because you'll have this, this uh, this earthen structure. But then on either side, it goes down six feet or so. So there's a, that's the problem. That was the concern that was raised by the neighborhood. And that's why they said no sidewalk because we caused this problem. But again, the understanding was in the plan that the right of way would remain as it is. And the fact is that it will not. And that's, that's, that's an issue. Because did council, did they expect this to happen? And that's an issue. I mean, unfortunately, it should have been worked out before we got here. Because then we could have found a way so that everybody's on the same page. But it's a surprise to suddenly appear. That's, that's the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Fitz.
So I'll just reiterate the comments from the city attorney were that uh those who have substantially, who are substantially impacted by the site is, is, is up to your discretion. But that was the guidance given by city attorney. Are those people who are substantially impacted have the opportunity to make public comment.
Right.
Um, the other item is that the city council in their review and approval of the zoning and the site plan did not have the ability and do not have the ability to um vary from the standards of the subdivision ordinance. Um, and so that's why this connection is made. It was also made clear that that connection up to the property line was part of the initial site plan. Approved, sorry, the approved preliminary site.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification there. Anybody else wish to speak? If you'll state your name and address.
I'm Lynn Clark. I live at 343 Yon Hill Road. And I don't really know that I can ask this question. It's the first time I've ever been to a planning board meeting. And so um, I'm sure everybody knows we have quite a few things going on in North Main right now. Um, setbacks, can I bring that up? Is that a topic or not?
So if if the setback requirement were not being met in this preliminary plat, that it, according to the subdivision ordinance, then yes, you could address it, but they are. Because that's not one of the, city staff did not identify the setbacks as being something on this preliminary plat that was that was not in.
I do.
Yeah, honestly.
I was just curious because of city council, it was a major discussion about setbacks. And I don't know anything about setbacks and other than it sounded like how close they are to the road. And what if North Main gets improved? Um, should it be a 20 foot setback or a 25 foot setback? And so it went back and forth. And then I guess the, you know, and all the discussion of it was um making the change from 25, which it sounded like that was what was suggested to the 20 that the developer wanted. And then what if North Main gets improved? Uh, what happens to those properties that are on that setback? And the comment was made, uh, well, they would just have to buy out all those people and the taxpayer would need to pay. And so I guess that's what caught my attention was when it was brought up. The taxpayer would have to pay, which I'm the taxpayer that would have to pay.
Maybe we all are.
Yeah, so I was just curious about that because I don't really know a whole lot about all of this. It's not my expertise, but it sure did generate a lot of discussion about the future of North Main.
Right.
And what's going to be along North Main. So just wanted to ask about that.
Thank you. Yeah, if you would, um, because I, I was not at that city council meeting, but I'd, I'd I do know there's going to be a turn lane though, correct?
There is a turn lane.
Okay, so there are going to be some improvements in North Main already widening
that are done by the developer. So this is, this is actually a good point that's been brought up. There was discussion about that at city council. And essentially uh uh, the motion for approval included a reservation along North Main. So the lots that uh are on North Main, that also ties to subdivision ordinance because the subdivision ordinance requires a 25 foot setback when there is uh essentially double frontage. So they've got a new road going in here. You have an existing road here. In cases like that, you have to have a 25 foot setback. The motion made by city council also stipulated that that 25 feet would be a reservation. So not a dedication, the land is not being dedicated over to NCDOT. But it is being reserved, meaning that there can be no structures or improvements in that area so that if North Main is improved, widened sidewalks, multi-use path, bike lanes, whatever it might be in the future, if it's reconfigured, additional right of ways needed, acquisition of that land that uh would begin but would not have to include the removal of structures and fences and other things that could drive up the price of acquisition of land for the widening of a of a right of way. So in this case, there is, the tax map shows a 60 foot wide right of way on North Main. I do not, I cannot verify that because um NCDOT's right of ways are uh are based on the maintenance, the area that they maintain. And so it would be some type of um research that would have to go into that. And that level of research probably isn't done unless they're actively going to begin designing a a project. So if it's roughly 60 and they're adding 25 uh on one side, um, that puts you at 85 or 80. Um, at most, for uh an improvement that accommodates all users, uh, whether it's with a median in the middle or bike lanes, you know, uh, four lanes, whatever it might be, 100 foot of right of way should be enough to accommodate that type of improvement. So this portion uh of the of the side of North Main is accommodating that potential future improvement along this segment where they front North Main.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Ultimately, the subdivision ordinance called for it to be 25. And so um I need to verify what the reservation is. So so they're showing a 25 foot reservation on this plat.
Okay, reserved land that cannot be developed.
That's correct.
Owned by the homeowner, whoever buys that lot. And they would obviously be informed of that when they.
It would be on the plat.
On the final plat, right.
Correct.
So can I ask, the 25 foot though, if an, if a turn lane is added, which is widening North Main for a certain, is the 25 feet from from?
Should be from the center of the road.
But 60 feet from the center of the road.
No, not from the, so in this case.
60 feet wide and then 20 on top of that. So 30, right. But does the center of the road cha- I get change if you add a turn lane?
So if DOT were to come in and impact that deceleration lane, they would have to accommodate that in their improvement.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So they would have to acquire more land and more right of way, put that turn lane in, but shift it over, whatever it might be. And that is, this is not on any um project list. It's not been studied. So, you know, we know DOT projects that have actually begun to be studied and put on certain um, certain lists and prioritization lists are already way out in the future, so.
Right, but the turn lane is is something that is.
Turn lane is happening now.
Yeah, yes.
Decel lane.
Decel lane, right, okay. Deceleration, it's at this lower, so if I'm coming, if I'm coming that's correct, north and west on North Main Street.
You're going to be able to get out of the way.
Be able to go into my neighborhood.
Take a right.
This lane to decelerate, and whoever's behind me can just keep going. Okay. Decel lane, yeah, I was using the wrong terminology, sorry.
And then this appears a right in, right out on this exit here.
Right in, right out only. I'm a north.
That's right.
Okay.
Can you see this little fine line right?
Should be, yeah, it should be right in here.
Right here, so this, it it shifts out. This is the main entrance and exit. There's also an additional right in, right out entrance and exit here. Meaning you cannot turn left into here, you cannot turn left out of here. You will be able to turn all movements here.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak regarding the preliminary plat review for Providence Walk? Anybody, go ahead, come on up, state your. the preliminary plat review for Providence Walk? Anybody? Go ahead. Come on up. State your name. And this, um, this must pertain to this preliminary plat and why it does not meet the subdivision code.
Hello. Uh, my name is Lynn Williams. I am at Chadwick Avenue. Um, the way that this affects me is that I'm located above Johnson's Ditch, which is also connected to this area just below and within the flood plain. Um, my, I just, uh, have some concerns. I just want to make sure under the environmental requirements, um, that were not listed. I just wanted to make sure that you, you will be doing your due diligence to make sure the endangered and threatened species are under thorough review in that area. There are lists of a number of them. Um, and how will the city ensure this oversight? Because, um, as I'm clear, the planning board is not involved in that. It's more like the, um, the U S Fish and Wildlife Service that does that. And I just want to make sure that we're ensuring that this is getting done. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the second part is, um, there's a lake on the property that's going to be readjusted. And I'm just not fully sure how it is. And I wanted to make sure that the models that you're planning for include how the lake will be reduced and how that cubic amount of water will be pushed into the flood plain and how that will affect, um, the flood plain directly below and the residence. As well as there'll be a loss of trees that will also include more floodwaters going into.
The subject matter really needs to pertain to why the preliminary plat does not meet the subdivision code.
Right. And so. So my concern.
That's really all we have.
Right.
Any, any discussion about here?
Correct. So the floodplain ordinance, for example, my concern is, um, pulling down the trees and moving this pond around, you know, really puts that into jeopardy, uh, with the flood plain. So these are my concerns. Um, and also just the safety around the way that the lake will be adjusted. If it will be a retaining wall for public safety, if it will be a retaining wall around the lake or how that will work, um, directly above the flood plain as well, if it fills up.
I, I just, I'm struggling to tie your discussion into why this preliminary plat does not meet the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
And you, you substantially impacted. Now, I will tell you, there were some ponds on the property. They were stagnant. They were covered with green slime. They're going to be turned into retention ponds for stormwater that are going to be engineered.
Correct.
In my opinion, that's, that's probably somewhat of an improvement because, because really they were, they were, they were kind of nasty. And I don't, I don't know where they came from, who dammed them up, you know, how long they've been there. But when I walked the site, they were just green slimy ponds.
Awesome. So they'll be improved for sure. And so my concern, like I said, was with the flood ordinance and, um, the addition of water to the flood plain in that specific area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? What about on the Zoom call? Do we have anybody on the Zoom call? If you, if you're on the Zoom call and you wish to speak and make a public comment about the preliminary plat review, please raise your hand.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have one on Zoom call.
What's that?
We do have one on Zoom. Jeffrey's iPhone. Please state your name and address to the right of place.
Thanks Tyler.
Hey, uh, hey, sorry, I couldn't be there today. Uh, my name is Jeffrey Duty, one, five, six, Yon Hill Road. Uh, can the, the setback, I know we talked about it, but can, how far is the house going to be from where the sidewalk starts? On North Main Street?
Okay. Is that your, is that your only comment?
No, no, I, no, no, I have a couple of comments, but I was just trying to listen in on, on the footage because I know that the ordinance is 25 feet and they reduced it to 20 feet. But I don't, the 20 feet, I, I was trying to listen in and understand how they said an additional 65 feet, but how far are the homes going to be from North Main Street?
Okay. Well, go ahead and give us your additional comments and we'll get you an answer for, for you on that one.
And then, uh, I just want to note that the, the, the acre of open space, I mean, we don't know what that number is going to be for the city, but I feel like that's a slippery slope to start doing that because then that's land that can be developed for an additional project that, that's in the pipeline further down the road. So I think some of these, these laws are, are, are in the books for a reason. And I don't specifically know what the good reason is, but somebody thought it was a good reason. So it's kind of opened up Pandora's box that anybody with a pile of money can, can create changes. I just am wondering why the setback got turned down to 20. And also because vision, if I'm not going to have an opportunity to speak, I don't want to ramble, but you know, to, to reply, but if, if it's only a 20 foot setback off of North Main Street, then that reduces vision. It also reduces the opportunity for homeowners to plant any buffering of trees that could, uh, you know, help give them some privacy and, and also create a, a less of a sight path for people turning in and out of this development. And Yon Hill is directly across the street from Oklahua Village. It's, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's right there off North Main. I'll be able to see that the first entrance and exit here, um, from, from my way.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, all right, that's it.
Okay. We'll get you some answers then. Um, so the, the.
Thank you.
The setback is 25 feet, correct?
That's correct. It is shown as 25 feet and that's what would be recorded on the final plat. And it, not only is it a setback, it's a reservation. So no structures can go in there. Site triangle is, uh, is a, uh, 10 foot back, 70 feet out. So if we're going 25 feet back with no structure, we're far surpassing any kind of site distance requirement that would, that would be required. Um, plantings in that area have to be above a certain height to ensure visibility as well. Um, the public dedication might've been some confusion there, but they will be required to dedicate the land. It sounds like they're agreeable to that. And so, uh, and it's in a floodplain undevelopable area anyway. So this is land that would be, um, dedicated to the city. It'd be its own parcel and would be under the control of the city and it would equal the amount that's required by the subdivision ordinance.
And it's directly across Mud Creek from.
And adjacent to the property. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else on the Zoom call? There, Tyler?
No, sir. Um, that's all we have with our hands raised at this time.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close public comment then, and we'll start our discussion up here. Anybody have any, anything I'd like to say?
I think it really just comes down to the two conditions and, or three conditions technically. We've kind of gotten a little off that, but let's just kind of decide. I mean, my opinion, the donating of land is the best way. I mean, for that major piece. So I'll be on that, that side of things, but it's up to everybody else more as a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm with you on that. And I'd also like to include some language to work with city staff on a, I don't know how we phrase it, reasonable, uh, best approach, et cetera, method to maybe to not have impermeable, um, substances used for the spur and the, uh, extension, uh, to the border of Oklahua Village.
Okay. So it sounds like, um.
I'd, I'd also suggest maybe similar type of deferral to staff on the alignment. Um, if working with the developer, you know, some other outcome is, uh, determined that their alignment that they've shown is okay, or, and they sound like they're willing to shift it. So I would, if, if there could be some openness to us, uh, determining the best location for that stub out on the south side, um, and, and, uh, you know, considering, you know, public safety concerns, whatever it may be, some flexibility. So we can look at that for final plat. Um, I think some language along those lines would be good.
Okay. It, it sounds like this board is, is agreeing then that this preliminary plat review is in compliance except for the dedication of the space, which could be a condition. The stub out on the south side being moved so that it could be developed. As we're looking at it to the, to the north, I guess that would be, or west, or east, it would be actually. And to the south and that the. Yeah, it is.
Yes.
And then the, the name has to be approved by Henderson County.
Okay.
Okay. Hope we could get a motion.
Great.
Take it harder.
I move the planning board to, to approve the major subdivision plat for the subject property pins, nine, five, six, nine, eight, five, seven, one, seven, two, nine, five, six, nine, eight, three, four, nine, one, eight, nine, five, six, nine, eight, five, three, four, three, four, nine, five, six, nine, eight, five, one, three, eight, nine, and nine, five, six, nine, eight, five, three, one, seven. Based on the preliminary plat submitted by the applicant, subject to the following conditions. Uh, again, the conditions need to be satisfied prior to the final approval, which include the, I guess what we say, donation of land. Dedication of land, um, for approximately one acre. The permeable surfaces in compliance with public works and whoever else, who else do we need to involve in that?
Uh, city staff.
City staff. Um, and then finally, um, confirmation that the subdivision name is not a duplicate.
Then we also, we're talking about moving that stub out. Did you mention that?
I did not. Um, and the location of the southern stub out needs for adjustments.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, I can tell you here, a major subdivision preliminary plat approval for Half Moon Heights. Mr. Manley is going to kick that off for us.
Yes. So, uh, I think we learned a lot about how this process works. It's the last item. Um, this, uh, preliminary plat is for Half Moon Heights. You're familiar with it. Uh, it is owned by Half Moon, uh, Land Holdings. Uh, it is 33, just over 33 and a half acres, then PRD. You can see it located here. There's an existing road that cuts through it. It's adjacent to Wolf Chase, uh, and Wolf Penn subdivisions and Ballantyne Apartments. There's, uh, large, um, low density, very low density, uh, developments to the south. There's two parcels there and a, another 20 acres, um, to the, to the west of the site. The existing conditions on the site, it is, uh, very sloped, heavily wooded. As I mentioned, has an existing street that stubs out or that connects into Wolf Chase. Uh, there's a Duke Power right of way along the northern border as well. The, uh, preliminary site plan is shown on the screen. Uh, again, shows the layout of lots, streets, open space, provision for, uh, cluster mailbox locations, street stub outs, public, uh, land dedication. Um, this one also shows, uh, some grading, shows the sloped areas, um, in green. And, uh, those items are also, uh, outlined here along with, uh, a screenshot of the typical lot layout and a cross section of the road, along with some other notes that are included on the plat. Um, going through the subdivision ordinance, again, the subdivision name needs final confirmation from Henderson County. Um, the dedication of public land, this has been addressed. Um, and I will show you the, the change of configuration, but, um, staff had asked that in order to accommodate, uh, this item under B, under usability, that, um, the parkland be shifted up to a flatter area at the top of the hill for increased usability. Um, that has been addressed and I'll show you at the end, uh, a recent submittal that we got today addressing some of these items. Um, similarly with our last item, the alignment of one of the stub outs, uh, to the south, um, is, uh, laid out in a way that makes it difficult for there to be, uh, a connection and continuation of that street. And so we would ask that, um, that alignment be reviewed and adjusted in order to accommodate a future continuation of that street. Um, I'll also note that the street grade, there's a standard for K value of 40, um, uh, in our subdivision ordinance. However, NCDOT has a standard of a K value of 10. This is the, uh, the peaks and, or the crest and low points of a street. Um, how deep they are versus how gradual they are. And so our K value of 40 is, is actually a, a greater standard, um, than DOT has for, um, uh, street configuration in the coastal plains region of the state. So we have a very, very strict standard that, uh, is not necessarily, uh, in alignment with the topography of our region. Um, and so I, you know, staff has essentially learned this through this process, through this review, and I think we will be addressing this. Um, there is a provision that the city manager, uh, may grant a deviation from these standards and that was done, email shown here. Um, and so that K value has been resolved. Didn't want to explain that to you that that had gone through that process. Staff had also, uh, requested that the stub out to Gypsy Lane, which is for pedestrian and utility connection, that it be treated, um, under the Greenway easement provision of the subdivision ordinance, which requires a 50 foot wide, uh, easement when practicable. In this case, uh, the stub out is 40 feet wide. So we asked that that entire, um, stub out be included in the easement that was originally 20 feet. They have since widened it to, uh, 40 feet. In the staff report, it was noted that they were below the standard for, uh, street connectivity based on the, uh, minimum street connectivity index score. That is, uh, that was a staff error. I ran the numbers incorrectly. Um, this map shows you here, the, uh, the links in yellow and the nodes in red. Um, and, uh, I had miscounted and ran a number that came out to 1.35, which was below the minimum requirement of 1.4. Based on, uh, reevaluation, the score is actually 1.625, which exceeds the minimum requirements. So this has been satisfied. I mentioned the continuation of new streets. The southern, uh, stub out here to the south comes about where this point is in the yellow circle. And so if you continue that street down, there is, uh, it runs into this parcel line. So staff would request that that either be adjusted to, uh, create, uh, a greater center, uh, to this property or at an angle that it could come around this curve, very tight corner here. And now it is possible that, you know, this property gets developed one day and there would have to be some kind of connectivity there as well, but there's no way to ensure that, you know, this street can be continued to this property. There's no, it's not, they're not adjacent to each other since Ballantyne is located right here. So that is one recommendation from staff, uh, that, uh, curious for the recommendations from the DRC. Just pointing out the continuation of streets, uh, or the, the other stub out, the other continuation of the street where they've stubbed out to this point. This is the amenity area that I mentioned earlier in the previous presentation. They're actually creating access to this. And they would stub out here to the property line, pave it to the property line with sidewalks. And then if this property, 20 acres here were to get developed in the future, there would be a connecting point right here and that could create additional access to 64. And as, over time, as these connections continue to, to be made, we, uh, build out a street network, um, that helps alleviate, uh, congestion and, um, a lot of the traffic current concerns that we're, we hear about on a regular basis. Based on our hierarchy of streets that we've built out over the last fifty, sixty years. I mentioned the easement connection to Gypsy Lane. As I mentioned, it was originally shown as twenty feet. This is, this has been resolved. Under steep slopes, in order to satisfy the conditions of steep slopes, they made lots fifteen through nineteen larger. They extended them. Into open space. So they are still delineating that open space at the back of the lots where it originally was, but also extends the lot line further. So I just want to, I want, I want to ensure that it's clear that that, that area that was extended would be placed in an easement. So that that area would be maintained as open space and accessible to the. Common area, community that could build their trail through there. They could continue to use it as open space. Even though it's also being utilized to satisfy the lot size requirement. So the actual property would extend further, but there'd be an easement on that additional portion. And I can point that out. Do that real quick. So these lots here, fifteen through nineteen, you can see there's a dash line. That was the original back property line, but then they were extended down the hill. And so the request is that this is clearly marked as an easement that maintains this as open space. So there's no development in this area. And then that would allow for, you know, the alignment of a trail. Which is also one of the conditions from the. Rezoning. And with that, I'll go to public comment. We received two comments. One from Donna Waters, seventy-three Winter Renn Circle. I am one of the homeowners who live within four hundred feet of the boundaries of the proposed subdivision. Because the city feels that we need to accommodate more residents, I would like to ask the planning division to go back to the future development plan. That was researched and drafted at a time where members were not looking at a specific development. At what would be best for the community as a whole. Within that document, it was determined that the community would best be served by residential development being built in a cluster, allowing dense development with. The least disturbance to the land. Half Moon Heights is a perfect example of how this. Would be a benefit to both the builder and residents by bringing the building. Lot smaller and closer, it would be possible to build where each unit would have privacy while enjoying a park-like environment. The builder was saved by not spending time and money reshaping and preparing a large area, leading to less paving and infrastructure. This is, you know, would be a relevant comment at the, at the rezoning stage. Good comment, but it is not necessarily applicable to the subdivision ordinance. Gus Marshank. Hope I didn't pronounce that too terribly. Forty snowy eager at way. This is for the December thirteen, twenty-two, one. This is city council. That's maybe the date of the, the date of the submittal, December thirteen. City council decided to approve the zoning change and now the planning board and the city staff has the responsibility to create the final document by checking all the appropriate regulatory boxes. By using the city's outdated rules and regulations. From my viewpoint, this decision creates a partnership between the city council, all the boards and staff involved in the process with the developer. This implied partnership does not allow any of the above to place blame on anyone but themselves when or if rules are broken. City staff and planning board has a responsibility to see the final document is strong enough so that the residents of Wolf Chase. Are not adversely affected by traffic, that the construction of the water retention system is more than adequate to stop any water from spilling onto Wolf Chase property. And that the tree cutting and road building will in no way create an erosion problem for Wolf Chase. Finally, it is incumbent that the city require a strong and adequate surety bond. To protect Wolf Chase and all adjacent property owners from a loss of real estate value in the event. For any unknown reason, the developer and its contractual subsidiaries abuse the rules set forth by the city. And/or if the developer for any reason cannot complete Half Moon Heights subdivision. Rules set forth by the city and/or if the developer, I'm sorry, the adverse. Rules set forth by the city and/or if the developer for any reason cannot complete the Half Moon subdivision. City's responsibilities also falls on its requirement to protect its taxpayers so that any decision made. By the city does not adversely affect the adjacent property owners. My written statement to the city council quoted theologian scholar and Cherokee descendant Randy Woodley and Richard Rohr. The condensed version states, quote, "The very land itself meant something quite different to the newcomer parentheses pilgrims." Than it did to the host people parentheses indigenous people. Native saw it was the settlers themselves and their failure to tread lightly with humility and respect on the land. The settlers wanted to live on the land, but the host people lived with the land. Living on the land means objectifying the land and natural resources and being short sighted concerning the future. Living with the land means respecting the natural balance, end quote. And this short sightedness continues to this day in spite of the earth speaking to us via destructive weather like the recent tornadoes. How can you protect the land when the side buildable envelope is within five feet of its property line? That places houses side by side, ten feet apart. No matter how you check the boxes, the land will resemble the development adjacent to the city boundary at Carolina Village on I-26. Visitors do not know where the city and county boundaries begin and end. The tree city designation will end. I will just point out quickly that. The implied partnership, we, staff has a role, planning board has a role, developer has a role, city council, we all have a role. But we are in no way in partnership in trying to achieve this development outcome. That's been. Tossed around a little bit, this development in particular, that somehow staff is. Associated with the developer, working with the developer to try and get this to kind of fruition. And I want to make it very clear. We have worked really hard to ensure that development aligns with the goals and the adopted documents of the city. We are the referee in the middle of this. And we're working hard to make sure that the standards are met. If anything. That has hurt the bottom line for the developer rather than help him in any way. So I wanted to address that. The other comment. About the nature of. The responsibility, who's to blame? I would say it's a hundred percent correct. That's our role as a city. We are the local government. We are here to ensure compatibility, to ensure standards are met, to inspect things. We have a great wide. Range of city staff that all work really hard to serve the citizens of Hendersonville now and in the future. By upholding these standards. So. I think this was kind of presented in some type of negative light, but I will agree this is a hundred percent our responsibility at this stage. So. That is the two public comments that we had received. I will open it up to any questions at this point.
Any questions? Matthew? Can you address the, is this, I know our subdivision ordinance are, I believe our subdivision ordinance has some type of bonding required if, if it's a larger subdivision?
So it's not. I, I don't know exactly a hundred percent what. This is referring to if, if like insurance. But what we have is a case where when they. Receive approval for preliminary plat, we talked about this a little while ago, they then move on to the construction plans. They have to build certain aspects of the required public infrastructure. Other aspects can be bonded. So they have to put in and Tyler, help me if I'm wrong. They have to put in the water and sewer utilities. They have to put in the stormwater. They have to put, put in a certain amount of road pavement. But they can bond the top layer of pavement, they can bond sidewalks. And Tyler, if you want to add anything to that. But the point is that when they, when they put that bond in place, they can begin their activity. But for some reason, they don't complete it entirely. The city is, is withholding some money that they, the city can go finish that. That part of the project to ensure. That it is built to, to city standard.
So we don't end up with a half-built project with erosion and all those other issues?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Tyler, was anything I missed on that?
No, no, you did a great job. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, would the, would the developer like to speak about your preliminary plat?
So I would like to address just two issues or not issues, but with two things there that Matt said. So this area, it was, and I don't think he was implying anything there, but this area was always listed as an easement. We always intended to leave this as natural open space through here. And so the note from staff was just that we clarify that and have a note that was more clear to see. And so we added that, but. Always had this as being open space. The second thing I'd like to talk about is this stub out here. And so when you look at it here, if you look at it in this photo, it can make sense to shift this up. But if we look at this over here and we look at it here, we see all of these grade lines. And so what this means is these are all two to one slopes on the backside. And every little line that you see there is a two-foot contour line. And so city streets. In the subdivision ordinance or is it zoning ordinance, require it be a ten percent grade on this road. Subdivision ordinance. And so the reason we have this stub out located where it is, is because. In order for us to tie this in to the existing property with a ten percent grade without disturbing any land on this property. This is the only place that we could do it. So for us to do it over here. We would, we would not be able to run that road all the way to the property line like is being requested of us. And so that would be my only concern with that. Now, that said, I would like to add that we are happy to work with staff on finding the best location for this. I just wanted to give the reason why we put it where we did.
Any questions? I do have one question. I mean, you, you said you would work with. Put it where it needed to be. It could have been angled though, so it doesn't, in other words, if it continued straight, it runs right into like a, I guess you call it like a pan.
Sure, sure.
So if it was at a different angle and you lost, let's say a portion of that back a lot for.
I, I'm happy to look at that. You know, we would, we would just need to look at how the best way to do it is. And I understand what you're saying. So. We, we, I'm happy to work through that. I, I think that would be a better solution than shifting it just due to the requirement of us actually installing that road. I, I had a similar conversation with Matt. So if you were building a road straight through this area, then you would be grading both sides. And so it, it would be more possible to kind of have something a little further out. But since we are only grading to one line and not going over, it, it, there are a lot of restrictions there.
Okay. We are going to go ahead and, and open up public comments, but I, I just really would like to reiterate the fact that this is a preliminary plat review. That's, that's. Our purpose up here. We're looking at this plat to make sure it meets the subdivision code. If you have comments that are pertinent to that, I'll be, we'll be glad to listen to them. But it really needs to, just because of what we're, what we're tasked with up here. So if you'd like to make comments, come on up, state your name and address and we'll, we'll take those comments.
Gus Marchanks, Norway Egrit, Wolf Penn. I will, I will respectfully ask that you allow me a little bit of leeway and it'll take a short period of time. Sorry for my voice. The intention of what I wrote was not designed to be negative. Over the course of the time that I've been through every meeting here, I've found some surprising faces. Sitting in these chairs. That certain past. Work, not by the staff, but by the developer. Surprised some people and they were really upset about it. My comment about partnership deals strictly with the fact that as everyone goes through the process. To accomplish what they do. That they somehow by making that decision become a partner in what's going to happen. The staff has done an excellent job. Being neutral. I want to make that very clear. So I don't want any misunderstanding. The problem of course deals with things we cannot see. The things we cannot see are those things that can and will go wrong based on Murphy's law. Not any regulation. So the concern about protecting the property. If in the event, for whatever reason. It goes south like it did in Wolf Chase. That it will not affect the real estate values of the people surrounding the area. And it will not cause any harm to the land. So that was the purpose of what I was writing. I am a professionally trained hospital chaplain. And I think I'm reasonably good at reading body language. And that is why I suggested that every board, whether it's the city council to the tree boarder and. You people, that when you make these decisions, whether it's Half Moon Heights or what it is. That you realize that agreeing to do something going down the road, even if it fits within the parameters of. The rules, that sometimes those parameters. Should be stronger. Or sometimes weak. That you do what's right based on your gut, not checking off the block. As we hear so often, which is I know what you have to do. And finally, what I want to say to the developer, this has never really been about you two gentlemen. It's been about our concern for the land. And I want that explicitly clear. And that's my personal opinion. I can't speak for anybody else. Thank you for the leeway.
Sure. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to speak? Come on up and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Janice Malendine and I live at one, three, five Creek Walk Lane in the Wolf Chase development. Wolf Chase currently has Half Moon Trail that goes through it, which is a public street. On that public street, the stormwater runs into, from all the streets throughout Wolf Chase. Runs into a, a dry detention basin. I mean, it just floods in there when, when it rains. The proposed streets with this. Have a continuation of Half Moon Trail that I believe will also be a public road. So it will need to be built to city standards. My questions are, will the stormwater from those streets go into their stormwater retention system? Or will they continue down Half Moon Trail and go into our retention system? And the second thing is all of the other streets, are they going to be public streets as well? If so, are they going to be built to public standards? And will, for example, snow removal be done by the city on those streets as well? I just wondered.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else like to speak? What about on the Zoom call? Well, yeah, we'll, we'll come back.
Okay.
Getting, I'm taking notes here. So we'll come back to those. It's just good or anybody on the Zoom call, if you'd like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand and Tyler will unmute you. Is there anybody there, Tyler?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, we don't have anybody currently.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public comments then. So there, there was some concern, I guess, about whether these are going to be city streets and where the water is going to go.
These are all public streets and they meet the public right of way. Standards and will be constructed to city standards, inspected by city staff, et cetera. Stormwater, you might. Can give more specifics. It obviously will have to meet, they'll have a stormwater plan that'll be reviewed by our stormwater administrator. And we'll have to, they'll have to study the area and ensure that they are not only meeting our requirements, but also meeting the condition. That they retain a fifty-year storm on this site. So they have. agreed to conditions that far exceed, um, the city's typical stormwater requirements. Uh, if you want to speak specifically to like where things are flowing.
So, um, the way, and I apologize if you guys are already familiar, but with stormwater, you, we are required to provide a stormwater system that can retain up to a 10 year flood. As Matt alluded to, we are retaining up to a 50 year flood. Now, what that means is we will be retaining the water on site and slowing that water down, but we do not retain it permanently. I mean, it's still, it has to go through the system as it always would. And so to answer Janice's question, um, after being retained in multiple storm tech systems for a period of up to 48 hours, that water will then flow into their system. And, and so, uh, there are different outlet sizes, at different elevations to restrict water, uh, flowing out of him at different speeds. Again, up to a 48 hour timeline. But eventually all stormwater on every site does continue flowing downhill. It's not retained permanently.
It's going to end up in Wolf Penn Creek.
Yes.
Going to be slowed down from your site. I think the question was, so Half Moon Road is already built. That water is flowing down Half Moon Road now. It's probably going into storm drains down to the creek.
Correct.
You're going to capture that water and put it, put it into your system?
Yes. So currently, um, there is a storm tech system already in place that captures water from Half Moon Trail. Only capturing water from Half Moon Trail. We will first put in our new systems, which will capture all of, of the water running off. So from Half Moon Trail, for many of our additional roads from, it will be designed to capture all of the runoff from future houses. And then at that time, we will remove the existing system because it is not in a good location for our current site. After our storm tech systems are installed.
These are all going to be city streets with snow removal and garbage pickup, recycling pickup.
Yes.
All that good stuff. Okay, thank you. Alrighty. Or an HOA.
Right. Till that time occurs, which may take a while. Correct?
Yeah.
So, um, discussion. I mean, we have a, we have a preliminary plat in front of us. We have an administrative process.
Yes, Matt, my one last question, as far as you talked about it kind of earlier, where the placement had looked to be for that. Access land, parkland, trails, all that stuff. Is it not dark? It's that dark here. So they actually expanded it down so that it, it does come closer to the top of the hill or right at the top of the hill. It does not extend all the way to the, um, the public easement here. They left a little separation, um, but it does bring it closer into conformance and actually exceeds the minimum requirements. What was the, is it 25% roughly 25% more land than what's required?
Okay, so it would be.
That would be public, this would be a parcel that's created, this would be owned by the city of Hendersonville.
And there would be a nature trail connecting to it.
Yes, but the alignment of that nature trail is not yet determined. It would be determined at final site plan. And potentially would be reflected on the final plat as well.
And this is where the, the views are from too. The views out toward Clear, the Clear Creek Valley, Bear Wall Mountains.
Yeah. Looking north.
Thank you. Discussion. We've got, we've got obviously a few things. Henderson County has to approve the name. They've already taken care of the dedication of, of land and the, the right of way to Gypsy Lane, 40 feet wide. So the only other thing is that stub out.
That's correct.
And he's willing to work with you for that.
Yeah, and staff's agreeable to that.
Well, and then, and then that easement being employed.
Yeah, just, and he's agreeable to that, but just want to make sure that that's noted, that there is an easement on there. And he's correct. It was just a clarity thing. Um, I just want to make sure it was.
Someone clearly on the. Make a motion. Proposed motions are in front of you.
I've got it on the screen.
I move planning board approve the major subdivision plat for the subject property in number nine, five, six, eight, dash, zero, zero, one, four, four, six, based on the preliminary plat submitted by the applicant and subject to the following conditions. Conditions that shall be satisfied prior to the final plat approval include, the noting of the easement. Am I correct? And.
And for further clarity between, behind lots 15 through 19.
Right. Behind, yes. The noting of the easement and the clarity behind that lots, 19 through 15. And did you want something in there, Matt, about the stub out?
I'm thinking if she could, if, if, if we could have the developer perhaps maybe work with city staff to redesign this stub out or, or move it. Redesign or move it.
Okay. And a condition for the contractor to work with city staff to determine the best location for the stub out located.
I think we referred to it as the, the southern.
Southern step out.
And then the name Henderson County.
Of the Henderson County, Henderson County approve of that.
Great. It sounds like we have a motion with three conditions that need to be satisfied. Any discussion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we've approved two preliminary plats. We're going to take a, we're going to take a three minute break. We'll reconvene at 5:45.
You with us Lou? I think Tyler might be on the line.
Tyler's going to do it?
Or Lou?
I, I am with you. Is, I can run through this and or I may lean on Tyler because he helped put it together.
Tyler, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Whoever wants to go for it, go for it.
Let's see. Lou, do you want to do it? Do you want me to go through it?
I'll let you run through it and I'm here to answer questions.
Okay.
There may be a few.
Okay, so this was a city initiated zoning text amendment for I-1 industrial and I-1 industrial CZD, um, conditional zoning districts. So this proposed change is to exempt certain industrial uses from triggering a conditional zoning district when exceeding 50,000 square feet. So simply what this means is right now, any use in I-1, once it exceeds 50,000 square foot in development or redevelopment, triggers that CZD process. So what this is saying is we're pulling some of those uses out. And we'll go into the reasoning of that here in just a second. So, so the reasonings for this is to allow the city to be more competitive in, um, large scale economic development projects. So a lot of these large scale manufacturing, job creating projects do not want to go through the conditional zoning process just because from a time standpoint and then just from how quick these projects build steam and build momentum. And another reason is it's a good job creation tool for the area. And also it really just follows the trends that a lot of the other municipalities in the state are already doing as far as economic development is concerned. So if you want to go to the next slide, we could actually go into like what some of these changes are. So when this conditional zoning district, conditional zoning districts were created across the board in any district, once you reach that threshold of 50,000 square feet, it required a conditional zoning district. So it didn't matter if you were in R15 or C3 or I-1, once you hit that certain threshold, you automatically, your project went through the conditional zoning process. So what we're saying is that the 50,000 square foot grows for area threshold for fire and rezoning is subject to exemptions established in Article Five zoning district classifications. So what that means is in the future, or for this, um, text amendment specifically, that if there is exemptions for uses that does not trigger the 50,000 square feet, this basically opens it up for that. If you want to go to the next, so this is actually, this is the actual I-1 language. So section, um, five dash 12 is just the overarching, um, introductory statement for I-1. It says, the language we're adding is that some of the permitted uses in this district are exempt from the size limitations contained in section four dash five E2 of the zoning ordinance as indicated specifically quote. So below, we go into permitted uses and we basically cut the current permitted uses in half. So half of these permitted uses are not exempt from the size requirement or the size trigger and some are. I will note that we're not adding any new uses that are not already permitted in I-1. We're basically just sorting them out. So, and this down here just further makes it clear for anybody looking at our ordinance that under I-1 CZD that some uses are exempted in section five dash 12 dash one B, which is the section, that part of the ordinance. So you're probably wondering, what are some of the proposed uses? So here are some examples of uses that would be exempt from the five or the 50,000 trigger. Uh, bottling plants, food processing, textile mill products, painting, publishing, or printing, publishing, sorry, apparel. Um, so it's more manufacturing, like textile type work that would be exempt because those are really the economic development, like focused projects. Those are the job creating type of developments. So some examples of uses that are not exempt would be like concrete plants, automobile painting bodies, civic centers, fairgrounds. So those are still industrial uses, but they're not really those job creation economic development type of uses that really foster widening the tax base and being a job creator for the community. So those are going to still remain under that threshold. So any of those uses, if they go over 50,000, triggering a CZD automatically. So these are, or this is the zoning map of where we currently have some I-1. So we don't have a lot of I-1 in the city. We have a, a good portion on the Seventh Avenue area. This big, large chunk towards the north that you'll see, that is where Kimberly Clark is currently. So it's a well-established, already an industrial use in that area. Over here near, um, I-26 is another good chunk. And all that's flood plain, uh, floodway. That's the property that is on the backside of the Universal Lakewood project. So just for reference, that, there's a small piece down here where somebody has the mouse. And that's near the Lennox Park, um, area. There's some old historical or not, I mean, not historical, but, um, traditional like industrial buildings that could likely be outfitted in the future. It also busts the Acoustic Trail. So I'm sure we'll see some type of redevelopment in that area. But that's why there's an industrial like little pocket among residential. Because those are some traditional industrial uses. I don't think, or they may not be, I don't think they're actually in use anymore, but the zoning is still in place for those areas. or they may not be, I don't think they're actually in use anymore, but the zoning is still in place for those areas. So future land use, the classifications that are currently involved with business or with the current I-1 zoning districts are Business Center, Downtown Core, Downtown Support, Neighborhood Activity Center, High Intensity Neighborhood, Medium Intensity Neighborhood, and Natural Resource and Agricultural. So you're probably thinking that's a pretty wide array of uses and it is. But the majority of those industrial uses or industrial zoning districts are centered in the Business Center and Natural Resource and Agricultural. So the Natural Resource and Agricultural, as you know, are floodplain areas, floodway areas, and the remainder are Business Center and our Complan Business Center is our most intense classification. It's a classification that's meant to foster industrial uses. There's a lot of it in current industry in I-1, but there's also a lot that abuts I-26 that's shown. So it's really fostered to create that business, well, Business Center developments that really abut I-26 for those higher industrial uses. Staff analysis. So coming from the comprehensive plan side and how this goes with our comprehensive plan, one of the actions in the land use category is to work with the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development and other economic development organizations and packaging incentives and overcoming development obstacles for economic development projects that meet the city's comprehensive plan goals. And the next one was work with the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development and other developer economic development organizations market Hendersonville as a business destination. So I think that by changing the thresholds for these triggers, it really allows the city to promote ourselves and actually really be competitive for the other municipalities to really open the door for us and have something to offer as far as a economic development incentive as far as our process. And I think this really fosters our partnership with the Henderson County Partnership just so we can further grow our relationship with them. If you want to go to the next one. So the Planning Board Legislative Committee did meet on this topic on November 16th. They discussed the text amendments. There was some discussion about what instead of getting rid of the trigger fifty thousand, if we just like increase it to like a hundred thousand or something like that, would that be a better option? And I think that everybody finally came to this consensus is that these type of developments are very large scale. So moving from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand really doesn't serve the purpose because a lot of these developments will exceed possibly a hundred thousand square feet anyways. So it's just, it wasn't really as effective as it could be. Ultimately, there were no motions made during that meeting. There was only a discussion. So that's kind of the word of the discussion was heading, kind of what it like followed. And if you want to go to the next, yeah, so I'm open for up for any questions. If y'all have any, I'd be happy to answer.
Tyler? Wherever you may be. I see whatever you've crossed off here on this list. You have added a whole new section perhaps called five dash twelve dash one B where you now have them back in in their own classification. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
That is absolutely correct. So what are the, were they marked off in the first section? Like I mentioned, we didn't add any new uses. So the ones that are marked off in the first section are the ones that are getting taken out and basically put into a new section that would not require a rezoning if exceeding fifty thousand square feet. So all the ones that are marked out are put down in this new category, basically exempting them from that fifty thousand square foot limitation.
It, it just seems a little arbitrary, but you're saying these are uses that are trying to encourage business growth by taking them out. These other ones that are left with the requirement, I'm not clear on, you know, how some of these choices were made.
I think some, I think compatibility is an issue and, and Lou, I don't know if you want to speak to the development of the list.
Yeah, I can, I can jump in here. So a lot of it actually has to do with the types of uses that we would be competing with other locations for. You know, some of the uses that were not put into the list that were exempted are reflective of uses that you would not specifically be competing with them. That type of use with another community. So a concrete plant, excuse me, is going to be built based on the needs of local conditions. It's not going to be a project where you might be competing for a manufacturer that was providing a service or a product that was more broadly used and therefore required, you know, that competitive edge. So, you know, Meritor as an example, not in the city, obviously it could use Kimberly Clark as one too, but they're, they are manufacturing a product that is sold literally all over the country. In some cases, all over the world. And so to get them to locate in your community, you're competing, they're, they're looking at a whole variety of locations to, to, to to choose where to locate their plant, their plant. Whereas, you know, some of those other uses are going to not be uses that we're competing for. And so that, that's really a, a big differentiating factor. You know, this was kind of a lesson learned from the Jable project out there on Upward Road. We really had to kind of jump through some hoops and contort our process a little bit to meet the timeline standards that they were seeking to, you know, to confirm the project. And this, this move does also align more closely our process with the county's process for industrial development in and on parcels that are already zoned industrial. So it, it's, it is a very targeted effort to increase our competitive advantage when it comes to working with the partnership and recruiting these types of industries into the city of Hendersonville. You know, and again, all of those uses that are under fifty thousand square feet, of course, they won't trigger the, the CZD process and many of those uses would fall kind of into that category.
Fifty thousand feet of building, not of land, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it's, it's a square footage of floor space.
And quickly, I, I don't see asphalt plant on here. Are they not allowed in the city?
It's a good question.
Not one they are not allowed in the city.
I do not believe they are. Yeah.
If it's not a listed use within our zoning ordinance, it's not permitted.
That's, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I've got several. Sorry, guys. First of all, this pertains only to I-1 that's going to go to CCD, correct? Just to limit the red tape to be competitive?
So it is limited to I-1. This would not apply to any other zoning districts. It's applying to property that's zoned I-1 or at some point in the future would be zoned I-1 and the process associated with development approvals in, within that zoning district.
Okay, do, are still, would public meetings for any of this still be held?
So if this CZD was not triggered, that would mean that the neighborhood compatibility planning board process would also not be triggered. So for these uses, it would be an administrative review.
Well, if it's over twenty thousand square feet, it would still come to planning board.
That, that is true. It would still come to planning board for site plan review, but it would be an administrative review.
Okay. And let me see. How many inquiries have you received your department? In these related highlighted industries, have you gotten a ton of them in the past six months?
I would say that no, we have not gotten a ton of them. This is more a reflection of, like I said earlier, lessons taken from the Jable process and also conversations with the partnership and what they face in their recruitment and how our process impacts that.
Well, I was looking at the map that you had put and a lot of the proposed housing that is going up in the city and just outside the city doesn't seem to be close to I-1 where there, you could walk to your job. So all these new industries, people are going to have to go from apartments to industry, which means car, 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 not the comprehensive connectivity plan. How is that working in a partnership?
Take one?
I was just want to mention that usually you don't find I-1 abutting residential just because those uses are usually incompatible as far as I-1 being pretty, sometimes being intrusive as far as the use is allowed. Now granted, historically you saw it a lot more as shown on the map as near Lenox Park. I will mention though with Jable that the Water Leaf of Flat Rock, that was a big talking point for them is that they are extending the sidewalk to potentially connect with the Jable project property down there. So I mean, that is one scenario where they're close, but just due to the incompatibility of the two like land uses, you don't normally see them side by side in newer zoning classifications.
That's, that was a good answer from Tyler. There, there are also a lot of jobs associated with our commercial corridors. And so we're typically finding, you know, higher intensity residential closer to those commercial corridors and then lower intensity residential uses further out. Those lower density residential certainly require a lot more automobile travel than the higher density residential that's adjacent to commercial corridors. I will also point out that the industrial area north of town is not extremely far from where we're seeing a lot of requests for development clustered around Berkeley and North Main, Signal Hill, Duncan Hill. Though that road, Berkeley Road is not the most friendly for, for walking or biking. But some improvements in the future could make that a viable connection to that industrial area. But you could also get down to the Greenway and take the Greenway all the way to that area. So bicycle connections are also a good way to cover a little bit more ground.
One more thing up there to the north.
I think Tyler's making a comment.
Yeah, my apologies. I just had one more thing to add. Up to the north, that area that's shown that's industrial, it does it for, over to the northeast. It shows the property that, but the Universal Lakewood project. And there's actually a, that's where the Clear Creek Greenway is going to get extended through that property. So there'll be a Greenway and high density residential proper project abutting that industrial zone property. Just I just want to throw that out there.
Thanks, Todd.
I do have a question with the industries that the city economic development and you are looking at including, would they be hourly wages, number one predominantly? And number two, how does that go in with our lack of affordable housing?
I'm not sure that we can speak to that as it relates to land.
Yeah, so as it relates to the zoning, that's, that's a little, little more difficult. I, I will note that if there are projects where we're recruiting economic industries to the community and we are offering them specifically incentives that there are, there are elements of that process that take into consideration the wages, right? So the wages have to be related to or tied to the average median wage and how they're related to or tied to that average median wage impacts the kind of incentives that a community can offer to recruit the industry. So that, while that's not specifically tied to land use, it is a part of the larger, you know, recruitment process.
And I do think there is a range of potential wage rates within the list that's shown.
You know, Barbara, to, to also to take a, another tact at that, I, I do think that manufacturing wages typically are are exceeding local median wages. But we have also heard from, you know, the the partnership and the, and the various folks that they work with because, you know, obviously one of the things that they do is recruit industry. The other big thing they do is work to keep the industry that we have here in the community and growing and thriving. And we've heard from that group that, that affordable housing is a challenge for them too. So it's not a, you know, we, we've, we're hearing that from a variety of different perspectives, not to totally sidebar us, but we did recently receive a study, the Bowen Study, which is a national consulting group that is looking at housing in Western North Carolina overall. And that is something that we're looking at how to bring some of that information. Happy to share the report with you directly. It's got tons of great information in it. But looking at ways to share that more broadly with you all moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? So, so I'm I'm of the opinion that somebody comes in with an application or we're trying to entice somebody to bring some jobs to the community and there's this stumbling block in the way where our city staff has to say to that developer, yeah, that'd be great. We'd love to have the jobs. We'd love to have your business in our community. But by the way, if you wish to put a building larger than fifty thousand square feet, which anybody that's could do any kind of manufacturing or it's probably going to be that large, you have to go through conditional zone. And there's another stumbling block in the way.
When I see too, I mean, a lot of these that are already in the area that have probably already dealt with that process. I mean, like I said, a lot of these are already here. So to make it easier with coming.
And in the past, it was always a special use permit. Now it's conditional zoning. By removing these, make it a little more enticing for somebody to come to our community with development because they wouldn't have that, that process in the way. There would still be a process here with the planning board on preliminary flat review. Am I correct?
Twenty thousand.
Anything over twenty thousand square feet.
Site plan review.
When this was, when this came to the legislative committee, which is right here. I wasn't a big fan of this, of taking the cap off entirely. I was arguing for a hundred or so. I wasn't a big fan of this, of taking the cap off entirely. I was arguing for a hundred or so. City staff, I think, did a great job of limiting this by industry and geographically to kind of strike a good balance between being flexible for economic development, but not trashing the city. So they brought me around. I, I, I'm in favor of this.
So zoning text amendments require public input, I assume?
A zoning text amendment is a legislative decision. So this is a, this will go for a public hearing to city council before it could be adopted based on your recommendation. And, and yes, you can take a much broader range of public comment.
So we'll go ahead and then and open up public comment as it pertains to this text amendment. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak? Anybody on the Zoom call, raise your hand if you'd like to speak. We'll unmute you.
Not seeing anyone.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. We've, we've already had some nice discussion. Do we have perhaps a motion?
I move the planning board to recommend city council approve an ordinance amending the official zoning ordinance of the city of Hendersonville, Article five zoning district classification, section five dash one, two, dash four, I dash one, C Z D, industrial conditional zoning district as presented. Finding that the zoning text amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, chapter eight, strategy L U thirteen point five, action L U thirteen point five point three. And the zoning text amendment is reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, it encourages reinvesting, reinvestment in commercial real estate within the city of Hendersonville, supports a suitable tax base. And it also gives us an advantage to do positive support with the Henderson County Partnership Economic Development and overcoming development obstacles associated with the industrial and manufacturing recruitment. We want to read all four. If it reflects the adaption of the city of changing the market trends and industrial recruitment and it aligns development review steps across local government entities to promote predictable and comparable development processes, optimally positioning the city for success in the recruitment of the industry to existing industrial sites.
A second then.
We have a motion. We have a second. Just have one quick question for staff. Do we need to tie this to the, to the comprehensive plan for any reason?
Yes.
I, I think you, you did in the, the motion.
With the reasoning, okay.
Yeah, chapter eight strategy is in there.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimous. Oh, we have one opposition. I'm sorry. Barbara, Barbara's opposed, so the motion passes five to one. Okay, next on the agenda. These. Is a re-zoning, conditional rezoning for the Hendersonville Home Two Suites. And Alex is going to tell us all about that.
Good evening. Staff is in receipt of the additional rezoning application from Hendersonville Home Two Suite. Project background, the applicant is Mr. Sanjay Patel, property owner, Sugarloaf Hospitality LLC. The PIN number is nine, five, seven, nine, five, six, seven, nine, five, six. The project acreage is 2.3 acres. So the existing zoning is PCD, so it's planned potential development. Co-zoning is PCD, C Z D, so planned commercial development, conditional zoning. The proposed development is a four-story hotel and meeting room. Well, to say that this zoning district site plan for this property was previously approved by city council as a special use permit in August 2018. The permit laps as construction did not begin within the given amount of time. And therefore they must come back and seek new approvals under the current zoning regulations. Applicant is requesting that the permitted use of hotels and motels and PCD, C Z D be permitted. So here's a vicinity map. You can see that the subject property or proposed development is gonna be here right where the star is. You can see it's close proximity to the I twenty-six interchange. And the other uses in the area, which include other hotels, the of the Ramada and Best Western. And I believe.
Hampton.
Hampton, yeah, there it is. Down here, maybe it's an old picture, but.
Cascades is there as well.
Yeah, you can just see kind of the area where the proposed product's going to be located. There's Sugarloaf Road. So like I said earlier, current zoning is PCD, planned commercial development. Co-zoning is PCD, C Z D. This also just shows the various, the different zoning districts in the area. So you have C three kind of on both the north and south of the subject property. And you do have R fifteen back to the east of the property as well. Existing conditions on the site. So as you can see, grading has begun on the site. The existing vegetation was approved to be removed without mitigation in 2018. Like I said earlier, applicant began grading the site per the 2018 approval prior to staff receiving this application, at which point applicant was made aware that the entitlements have lapsed. The applicant will have to plan additional landscaping to bring the site into performance with the current landscaper requirements of section 15 of the zoning ordinance. And I believe also too, I'll point out that there was the final site plan was approved. I think it was August thirty first, 2018, as well as a landscaping was approved in 2018. Landscaping plan was also approved in 2018. So this is kind of where we're at now with existing conditions on the site. This is the preliminary, preliminary site plan. Again, it's a four-story hotel and meeting room. The zoning district site plan was approved by city council, special use permit back in August 2018. It's ninety-eight guest rooms. It's sixteen thousand five hundred square feet per floor, which is a total building space of sixty-six thousand square feet. The meeting room is gonna be, I think, eight hundred and sixty square feet. I will mention here the parking requirements. In your staff report, I kind of went into some detail a little bit about the shared parking agreement that was in place. I will note that earlier in the current planning subcommittee meeting, we were kind of talking about this as well. And we had spoken to the applicant about putting in, so here's their parking this, the day in the country. Store and cafe is right, parking is over here. About just making a pedestrian connection between like the two parking lots. So if you were parked in the hotel parking lot area, you can walk through over into the parking area of the day in country and vice versa. And I believe when we did discuss that earlier on with the applicant, they were amenable to doing that. It just wasn't, we'll follow up with them and I think they're gonna be on Zoom. Can also mention that as making that possible recommended condition. Future land use map. So the comprehensive plan designates the subject property and surrounding area as a regional activity center. Goals of this designation is to meet the large scale retail needs of residents while encouraging mixed use, walkable design through redevelopment and infill projects. Locations for original activity centers or commercial areas surrounding US sixty-four and I twenty-six and Upper Road and I twenty-six interchanges, which you're sitting in the map and you can kind of see a little bit on this map. That's kind of right in that location. Secondary land uses include multifamily residential offices and public institutional uses. The comprehensive plan also designates this area being in a priority infill area, which are areas that are considered a high priority for the city to encourage infill development on remaining vacant lots, underutilized commercial properties and undeveloped properties. Staff analysis is that the proposed zoning is supported by the comprehensive plan. Site is located in priority infill area. It's located in proximity to Interstate twenty-six interchange. And the proposed development will provide further accommodations for visitors to the city of Hendersonville. Staff proposed conditions, I mentioned earlier, the pedestrian connection to the parcel to the north where the shared parking is in place. And we also in the subcommittee earlier talked about dark sky compliance. That was brought up during the neighborhood compatibility meeting for this proposed project. And I did send and we spoke with, have been in a conversation with the applicant and sent him the information about dark sky, dark sky compliance. And he was going to relay that information to their lighting engineer as well. And so I know that they're probably on the Zoom call, let them kind of speak to that, maybe give an update as to where they are with, with that. But that was what staff's proposed conditions are. And I'll open it up for some questions.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Just got two quick ones. Just as far as the sidewalk right now, is there any other connectivity noted that part? They'll be on the front of their property.
So yeah, so there are, it's going to be a sidewalk required in the front on Sugarloaf.
Is there any other, I mean, are do you know?
No, I think that it's besides that and the connectivity to the adjacent shared parking are the required connections. Sidewalk fronting is Sugarloaf, Sugarloaf is required.
Just like to be clear, if this was still zone C three, would any of this be necessary? Come and apply for a zoning redo?
If.
It's over fifty thousand square feet, so this triggers C Z D. Oh, one thing, it was noted that the zoning is PCD. Then technically it's PCD SU, special use. And all special uses are now categorized as C Z Ds. So in this case, they just had a, their binding site plan was voided. And they lost those entitlements. And so there's really nothing you could do with the site until you come back and go through the C Z D process.
So the sixteen thousand five hundred square feet per floor times four floors triggers over fifty thousand square feet?
That's correct. Sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six thousand, yeah. Yes.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, my understanding is that perhaps the developer or owner of the site is, is on the Zoom call. Go ahead and unmute you and you can make your presentation to us.
Is the developer, someone represented developer on the call? If so, raise your hand. Use the raise hand feature. I had gotten an email saying that they had another meeting at five thirty and were, didn't realize that this, that our meeting was gonna be as long as it is.
They were on earlier.
So then maybe they dropped.
Well, so we won't be able to ask any questions. I'll get a presentation. Do we have some? I guess we need to open public comment.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open public comment. If anybody in the room would like to speak about this project, come up and state your name and address.
Ten Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. The presence of another hotel in this commercial zone would not raise objection except perhaps from competing entities. However, the issue of concern here is that the property was clear cut and graded before submitting an application for the rezoning. Thus before any neighborhood compatibility meeting. So this was not a very neighborly gesture. Given the fact that the area was clear cut, the large trees removed and the elimination of a vegetative buffer, along with the presence of a blue line stream, it would be important issues that need to be addressed and subject to your review, including compatibility with nearby residential presence, especially for a four-story building. But again, it is not the project itself that would raise objection, but concern for other issues that may need attention and thus far managed to escape review. One does hope the tree board will have some important input. If you look at that site plan, it does not look very green at all. So one hopes that there will be at some point some measure of respectful compliance. It's thus far absent to make a truly compatible project and to undergo the process with full respect for everyone involved. Thank you.
Anybody else? Somebody on the Zoom call, if you'll raise your hand if you'd like to speak and we'll unmute you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one person on Zoom.
Okay, once you're unmuted, state your name and address.
Amit, been unmuted. Go ahead and state your name, address. Amit. You've been unmuted. State your name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is.
It's like we lost your connection.
Hey, Amit Gavindji. Hey, this is Amit Gavindji. I'm part of the development team with Sanjay Patel. Hope everyone's doing good.
State your address, please, for the record.
Oh, Amit Gavindji, one five five Sugarloaf Road, Hendersonville, North Carolina.
Okay, go ahead with your comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Presentation. Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
He muted himself on the unmuted.
Amit Gavindji, one five five Sugarloaf Road, Hendersonville, North Carolina.
Go ahead with your comment.
Can, can you hear me now? Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead with your comment.
One five five Sugarloaf Road, Hendersonville, North Carolina.
Go ahead with your comment. Do you have a comment or a presentation?
Yeah, sorry, there's a slight delay and sorry, Sanjay had got called, called into another meeting, so. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties here. Okay, so I want to say we, we honestly did not know that the permit was expiring and we caught everything basically at the, right at. It's, it's not letting me talk. I'm sorry. I don't know what's going on.
You're fine. We can hear you. Continue with your comments.
The comment is that we, no, comment is that we are, we are excited to be a partner with the city of Hendersonville. We already own the Hampton Inn and we will do everything in our best ability to make sure that we are a great community partner with this product that we're investing in, into the community. We do apologize that the tree line had been cut. We will do everything that we need to work with the tree board and just, we want to be a. and just, we want to be a great, another partner and a neighbor to the community. So whatever it takes, we do apologize that this, you know, has been started this way and we will do everything we can to make sure that this is a winner. Okay. Okay, yeah, that's all I had. The tree line, we've, the dark zoning, we've applied to Duke Energy. We should have something back from them hopefully soon. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, anybody else on the Zoom call, raise your hand, if you'd like to make comments and we'll unmute you?
Not seeing anyone else.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comment portion. And does anybody have any questions for staff after? So I guess kind of I do, but anybody else have any question?
If I may. Matt, the conditions, or I'm sorry, my apologies, you're the, you're the lead here. Ignore me, Matt, please, my apologies. For conditions or proposed conditions, do we not now need written agreement between the city and the developer? To have them as part of the deal?
I think some of those conversations took place already.
Yeah, that, so the written agreement happens after, there's essentially a verbal agreement at city council and then a written agreement after city council makes a motion, which includes the conditions. Those conditions are then written and attached to the ordinance and then they sign off on it. So we could proceed today with conditions? That's correct. Thank you. They're a recommendation, these are just recommended.
Just a recommended condition, okay. So the initial approval, did the tree board look at it? I mean, the site has been completely like cleared off.
Right, so to, what's in the file and to our staff's knowledge is that there was a landscaping plan that was approved, signed off and approved. And the final site plan was approved all in, I think, August thirty-first, that was eighteen. And I'm not sure, I didn't see anything about it going in front or referencing. Going in front of a tree board, I can definitely go back to it and look at it.
I just actually sent us a note, we will take this, since the tree board is tasked with reviewing landscape plans and that this is a new. They're, they're submitting new plans, even though they mimic the previous plans, but they have, they have not gotten approval yet of that landscaping plan. We will take this to the tree board on December twenty-first and have their recommendation before it goes to city council on January third. So we'll add this to the agenda for tree board.
Their recommendation for replacing and creating buffers.
That's correct, mitigating the impact of the site.
And then the other question I have is about, we're not looking at any elevations, is about architectural standards?
Not required for P C D.
But are there architectural standards in place? What we don't want to end up with is just a.
P C D does not have architectural standards. So are mixed-use districts have architectural standards?
Right, like, like upward road and.
Like Greenville Highway mixed-use, Highway mixed-use, Central Highway mixed-use. But none of our straight commercial areas, C three, C two, P C D, or P R D, are, any of our districts, none of those have. M I C, none of those have design standards.
So how do we not end up with a rectangular box?
You would, the only way to really ensure that from a zoning compliance standard, other than. I mean, you could propose a condition that they meet the standards of one of our other zoning districts. Or you could recommend that it be rezoned to a zoning district that permits hotels and has design standards.
There's no place a condition on it.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is there a way to place a condition on it and leave it P C D, C Z D?
Yeah, but the developer would have to agree to the condition.
Right.
And the developer specifically requested this zoning district. So if you did recommendation for another zoning district, essentially the, I, I. The property owner has to consent to the, to a C Z D rezoning. So in either case, I think there, whether you change the zoning district that they're requesting or if you added conditions that address the architectural concerns, the developer would have to agree to those. And the way you would do it from a condition standpoint, I think is just refer to, I think the. In this area, we have Highway Mixed Use, it's the closest mixed-use zoning district. So you could refer to the design standards of the Highway Mixed Use zoning district. And then that would also trigger chapter eighteen of the zoning code, which applies to all of our mixed-use zoning districts.
Is it a concern of yours as a professional planner?
Design is always a concern as a professional planner.
Any other discussion, any other questions?
I think it would also drastically impact their site plan, most likely. They'd probably be having to shift parking to the side and rear, bring the building up. So, so from that standpoint, it'd be probably good to get some impact, some feedback from the developer as to their willingness to look at those kind of changes.
Much is this changed from the original kind of plan or does anybody?
I, I think the site plan would, would most likely change a lot, but the biggest probably impact is gonna be. How big a difference would, would this?
What's currently?
What's being proposed? What's being proposed?
This is the same as twenty eighteen. They took the site plan for twenty eighteen, so we need to get this approved again, essentially.
No, it's a, that's.
Is it the same contractor?
It's the same developer. There may have increased their partnership, no, I think it's the same exact development team.
I mean, the only thing, if you have a concern about design and Matt said there are several things we can look into, you can postpone it and look into it. Or you can just vote out.
You, you could make the condition that refers to these design guidelines and then staff can work with the, the developer to determine which of those design guidelines that are willing to meet and agree to, and the ones that they're not, they wouldn't agree to, so they wouldn't be able to satisfy that condition anyway.
That's what you call changing the rules in the middle of the game. They're doing everything.
They didn't develop it in time either. For the permit they have.
This is brand new.
But the zoning there does not require.
Right.
Design guideline, as you're saying, oh, we need to stop it then and change the whole ordinance.
But it does require that this board review it prior to approval.
It's the game, these are the rules.
Well, these are the rules we have. If you want, suggesting we stop the project to change the rules.
I mean, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, but the design standard. Has anybody seen any elevations? We're just looking straight down at it and it's just a.
There's not any elevations in there, it's a middle.
Not in the submittal. Don't know if there was one previously submitted, you know, in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. I think.
So, I mean, the only, I'm sorry.
I think Mr., I mean, he's raising his.
Yeah, he's raised his hand, we can talk to him, see what the rep from the developer. My only other comment I would make is that, as far as like this dialogue about changing the rules, is that there, there are conditions that change, there are market conditions that change, there are environmental impacts, there's the, the demand, the growth that we're experiencing. So there's factors that are going on that could influence how the planning board is viewing a particular application. So Amit, we've unmuted you again. If you care to respond to some of the discussion that's taking place. Go ahead, we can hear you. Yeah, we could hear you, we do not hear you now.
It doesn't sound like it's working.
Cause there's like a twenty second delay on these things.
Okay, let's try it again.
That's better.
Absolutely, and to go back to the plans, they have not changed. We were complying with everything we can from twenty eighteen. These are the only things I think the dark sky compliant. The, the dark sky compliance is what we're adding, the lighting package, more landscape.
Oh, man. You're okay, we can hear you. Just keep talking, we can hear you.
And I think there is a twenty second delay, so I'm gonna try to talk a little bit slower here, I apologize. Again, we did have delays and we apologize. The reason is, everything was out of our control. Nineteen, there was financing issues. Twenty, obviously, everyone knows COVID, COVID has changed the destination, the way people travel, and we're just trying to adapt and bring something. We're trying to bring something to the market that is something new, something fresh, not as typical hotel. So from the design perspective, we are going to do our best to make it a very beautiful building.
You, there was recently a home two built in Asheville on Highway seventy east, kind of between Asheville and Swananoa, you know if it's gonna be similar to that? Design? Twenty seconds, it won't come.
Especially when you've been here since two thirty.
He appears to have muted himself, let me ask him to mute.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm gonna assume it's gonna be very similar to that. I mean, as far as the design standard on that goes, it's an appealing, it's not just a rectangle going in straight up, it has. But there's really no requirement, there's another home two suites there, right?
I'm not sure when that one was built, but most of the home twos that have been built are very unique. They are, they are built for extended stay. They extend to stay a customer. And this will be a high-end product.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? If not, we're probably getting close.
Well, but there's no requirement to. That's not part of his application, it has to be. Well, with the conditional zoning, it's site plan specific. So they would have to build a hotel of that size. With that kind of parking.
Right.
But there is no design standard because of the zoning district.
Any, anybody prepared to make a motion?
So we're looking at conditions for dark sky compliance.
Right.
I'm sorry, the walkway and reviewed by the tree board on the twenty first and following their recommendations?
Well. I would be okay with that.
You know, once again, I'm gonna say, we don't have a lighting ordinance that requires dark sky today. And he said, I heard one of the planners say that, you know, they're gonna discuss that with the lighting engineer.
Well, with Duke, which is about as far from dark skies you could possibly imagine.
Someone else said a lighting engineer, but. You know, to, again, mandate that it must be dark sky compliant, and it doesn't exist in our ordinance is a stretch to me, I've said that before, said it again.
So, one, either you or I will probably wind up voting against this.
Well, the nice thing about conditional zoning is if, if the board agrees, and the developer agrees and it sounds like the developer's agreeable, we can place conditions.
Well, we don't, he never said, yes, why would that, he doesn't even know what it is.
Right.
You know, so, and we don't have an ordinance that says what it is.
Right.
That's the weak spot of that.
I, I understand.
Get what the other item was.
It was the walkway connection between the shared parking lot, yes. Right.
And the tree board?
Tree board, that was, that was the other thing. You know, the, the tree board, it concerns me because they've been known to suggest items that were well beyond the tree, the, the landscape ordinance. So I'm a little concerned about what they might want to have in there. It says past us, you know, if this passes tonight in some form. You know, it's all up to city council anyway, I suppose, you know? But that just concerns me that the tree board hasn't been given a chance yet. We haven't reviewed their comments. And I don't know what the time factor is on their application, most people like to move as fast as possible. But, you know, if it were to be delayed and come back with your concern about lighting and maybe my concern about tree recommendations, landscape, I have no problem with that.
That would be welcome, as far as I'm concerned, putting it to January.
But I kind of hate to slow him down, but I don't know if you've had any concern with the timing yet.
So I'll just say that the tree board recommendation goes to city council. A practice that we changed, since I've been on board, was having it go to tree board prior to planning boards, so you guys could be informed of it. However, your recommendation related to the tree board's recommendation doesn't change that the tree board's recommendation, as it was stated by the tree board, goes directly to city council. So they will still have that opportunity by taking this landscaping plan to them in December next week, in order for their recommendation to still move forward to city council.
Who changed that?
I'm sorry.
Who changed that timing?
It was a mistake on my part. Are, do you? A mistake on my part, are you referring?
Specifically about this one?
This project did not go to tree board.
Prior to planning.
I thought you said all projects.
No, 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 no.
All projects typically go to the tree board before coming to planning board. That was a change that we made. That's a change that we created. We changed the timing of the tree board meeting so that we could bring a recommendation from the tree board to the planning board before going to city council. That was implemented in twenty twenty. This particular item, that did not occur, and we're gonna instead take it to them. On the twenty first, prior to city council.
Council will have the tree board recommendation.
And the planning board recommendation, just like they always do, yeah.
Just like, okay, and when does that, when is that meeting?
January third, I think, city council.
I mean, we've, we've got a full docket in January and we've got a really full docket in February. It'd be nice to try and get some kind of consensus.
Staff would concur.
At least some type of a, of a, of a motion that we could vote on.
Well, I can favor this as long as that dark sky requirement is in, if it's not, I cannot, it's.
I mean, we, right across the street, there's a storage facility going in and they agreed to it. I mean, it's, it's going to be part of.
One, another option would be that we defer this until after other business and you can hear the update on the lighting ordinance and learn more about it.
If, if we don't have a motion, let's go ahead and defer this to later in this meeting after we hear about the lighting ordinance. We'll move on to the next agenda item then.
Do you need a vote? You need to vote to defer.
Oh, okay.
Or table it, I would say, table it, not defer it.
Okay, can somebody move that we table it until later in this meeting?
I'll make that motion to table this item we just discussed until later tonight.
Okay, second, second, on favor? Any opposed? Okay, so, we're gonna go ahead and move on and come back to that. So we have a conditional rezoning for East Central Street.
That is correct, and I will run through the presentation, and then Lou, I think, is gonna fill in here and there, or add some things at the end, or open for questions as well. All right. The project background applicant is Mr. William Pace, property owner, William Pace Jr. LLC. The number is nine five seven eight two four nine seven one zero. Project acreage is three point zero six acres. The existing zoning is C two C Z D. Conditional zoning district. We're not, applicant is not requesting to change the zoning. It's gonna propose only would be remain the same, C two C Z D. Rather, the applicant is requesting to add automotive paint and bodywork, which is a special use in C two, and additional permitted uses in C two zoning district to the approved list of uses for the conditional zoning district at this subject property. And I have a list of, I'll go through like these existing uses, and then the proposed added uses. I have two different slides later on that will list those out for you. Sinney map, this just, the red star indicates where the subject property is located. You can see it's in close proximity to Spartanburg Highway and Old Spartanburg Road, and the various other commercial uses that are existing in the area. And then you can see kind of further north of the property and surrounding uses up in here are mainly residential use. So a site plan was approved by city council on April second, two thousand twenty. There are no proposed changes to the site plan. The proposed building that was indicated on the site plan in two thousand twenty has since been constructed. So that's one thirty nine East Central Street. And I'll show you on the next pictures here for the existing conditions you'll see. So the two top photos here, these building and the side of this building, that's one thirty seven, and you go down this road here, and there's that back commercial building. That's one thirty nine East Central Street. So like I said, current and proposed zonings, current zoning is C two C Z D, the proposed zoning is C two C Z D. Just adding additional uses to the existing C Z D. Future land use map designates this property as high intensity neighborhood. Purposes of high intensity neighborhood designation is provide a transition between commercial and single family development. Secondary recommended land uses include public and institutional offices, office and retail along thoroughfares and recreational amenities. These high intensity neighborhoods, definitions are typically are located near neighborhood activity centers. And you can see kind of are on the future land use map, that neighborhood activity center that's right around Spartanburg Highway there. And they're also located close proximity to downtown. So here are the list of the existing uses under the current C Z D that was approved in two thousand twenty. This, so that plan is requesting automotive paint and bodywork, which is a special use in C two, and they requested additional uses that are permitted uses within C two zoning district. They're not all of the uses. We've kind of teared them down, repaired them down to uses that wouldn't trigger him or the applicant having to come back through process again. So basically keeping it to uses that would fit with the current commercial property, the building that's that is existing as it is now. Staff now also request additional use aligned with chapter eight in the comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding and existing uses already established in the area. Opening up to questions or if Lou wants to.
Yeah, let's just show the, this is the full list of C two uses. And the ones that are struck through are those that are not included in the proposed list of uses for the C Z D. So you can see that some analysis and discretion was used in selecting those uses that would be appropriate to be included in the C Z Ds. Should there be a future need for these uses? All these are pulled from the underlying C two zoning district. Then any that would be considered incompatible or not in line with the, the building that's constructed or not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, those were left off the list.
And the only special use?
Is just that automotive.
It's left on the list.
Which is the primary basis for the request to add an additional use to the list of uses for the C Z D.
Okay.
Only this piece of land, it's only this piece of land, not any other C two somewhere else.
That's correct. It's just this.
For staff? Okay, Mr. Pace, would you like to come up and speak about your?
Answer any question. It's just like John said, it's just for that specific address. And it's in, it just goes with no further changes to any infrastructure or or expanding many buildings. So basically, we want to put a court-sized business in a court-sized building. We just use the facilities that's there. And I hate to have to come back to do it, but these, the fellows that approached me are established businesses. It's actually hills from East Flat Rock that's been there fifty-five years. They're just downsizing on a smaller, more streamlined business. They just sold their, they, I guess they leased their business and sold their business to a franchise that needed a big place, and they were the only big place in the area. So the third generation fellows that want to work, keep doing that business, they would like to be in that spot, which, which I wouldn't put them in if I didn't know. It wouldn't be like I'm advertising for somebody. It's just for that special, that, that one, that one tenant, and that's the reason I was agreeing to take out all the other conditions of C two, because that was, we sort of, we were covered like under light manufacturing to where we could use a paint, and then you were under services, you could work on cars, but you can't do that paint and body. It just needed to be defined a little bit better. So I had to come back and bother y'all again for the sixth time in five years.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Pace.
All right, thank you.
All right, does this require a public comment? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open up public comment. If anybody in the room would like to speak, let's come on up, state your name and address. Anybody on the Zoom call that would like to speak, raise your hand and we will unmute you.
There's nobody on Zoom.
Okay, closed public, public comment, and.
Let's see, Lou, did you want to make some comments before they deliberate?
Not, nothing too much to add here to Mr. Pace's point, you know, with the C Z Ds and the, the C Z D process creates a site-specific rezoning. So if changes happen to the, the site, it has to go back through this C Z D process. If a certain number of uses, historically, we have just picked one or two uses and then associated those with the C Z D. Just as the site, major changes to the site require them to go back through the entire process, so do additional uses. And so staff are trying to work more towards a, a wider list of uses with the idea that should Mr. Pace five years from now have someone who wants to, you know, open one of those other uses in the existing buildings, and it doesn't require anything other than a change of use, he would not have to go back through the rezoning, the C Z D process. So the, and the goal there, from our perspective, is that the C Z D process can be, if you are simply doing a change of use, the C Z D process can be somewhat onerous, right? There's a neighborhood compatibility meeting, there's all the other elements of it. So, you know, if for whatever reason a dance and fitness facility wanted to go into Mr. Pace's building sometime in the future, he would be able to come to the, get it, pull his zoning permit from staff without having to go back through the C Z D process. So we are working with other staff, city attorney and others, to refine this approach. But to, you may see slightly longer lists of uses when it's appropriate and associated with C Z Ds to try and, you know, counterbalance some of the impact of that process. So just to Matt's point, just kind of wanted to note that, and if there's any questions about it, please let me know. This did come up for discussion in the the rezoning for the storage units on Sugarloaf at the city council level, and we're, we're working to kind of refine what we're wanting to, to, to do with this.
Thank you, Lou. Okay, we have any discussion, perhaps lotion?
Oh, hey, I can read this motion as well as any of us, I guess.
Thank you, Neil.
I move the planning board to recommend city council approve the adoption of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville, changing the zoning designation of the subject property, pin nine five seven eight dash two four dash nine seven one zero, from C two C Z D, secondary business conditional zoning district, zoning to C two C Z D, also secondary business conditional zoning district, based on the site plan and list of uses submitted by the applicant. Finding that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map designation of high intensity neighborhood, and that the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. That the map amendment is consistent with the two thousand thirty comprehensive plan, chapter eight, land use and development. Excuse me. Two, that the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Three, that it is reasonable and in the public's interest to approve the application because it will advance goals related to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Okay, next on the agenda.
I think it's me. Can I share my screen or, yes, I can. Sorry, guys. Does everybody see that presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is not an action item. We're reviewing lighting ordinance draft. And what I'm going to review are sort of the components of the ordinance at a thirty thousand foot level. And our goal would be to introduce sort of where we started and where we are and get some high-level questions from you. There's been, you know, some questions and discussion by the lighting subcommittee already kind of over the weekend, and we can, we can touch on that as we need to. But we'll just run through it. So this is a zoning text amendment city initiated. It was actually sort of planning board related, but also city council directed. And it did kind of get kicked off over this past summer, and planning staff had not had the opportunity really to move, move it much forward, and we're trying to re-initiate that. And so here we are this evening talking about it. So at this stage, we are proposing the, the ordinance as it's currently written is applicable to basically all of our mixed use and commercial districts. It does not apply to any of our residential districts, but all of our mixed use, including our larger PRD planned residential district and all of the commercial districts, it's applicable to. So any multifamily development would be, you know, would fall under one of these zoning districts, and any commercial development would fall under one of these zoning districts. And then there is also a component that's related to two, two additional zones, one of which is a stream but, stream buffer and elevation. The, a natural resource zone that's tied to our stream buffer standards, which is a fifty-foot buffer around blue lines, and then elevation. And what we did, discussed thus far is elevation parcels above twenty-three hundred feet within the city. And then a somewhat newer element, but based on conversations and just a recognition of the transition between residential and commercial, a residential transition zone, which is just identified as fifty feet from the edge of parcels within the commercial and multifamily zone that abut residential zoning districts. So there are three basic districts. So ordinance purpose, you see there what that is, that that is language that for the most part comes from the original model lighting ordinance. It's to minimize the adverse off-site impacts of lighting, to curtail light pollution and reduce sky glow to help protect the natural environment and to conserve energy and resources. We will have, I will have some mapping for you as we move forward, but we're currently updating what the zones are and where they apply within the city. The original proposal that was initially reviewed by the lighting subcommittee and also spent some time in front of the business advisory committee included four lighting zones, lighting zone zero through three. The current districts are commercial and multifamily, the residential transition zone, and the natural resource zone. Just for reference here real quick, this map was created for the initial discussion, and it shows the fifty-foot stream buffer. I don't know if you all can see my mouse or not, but these blue, the blue lines are, are the fifty-foot stream buffer. The, 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 this, these elevations are twenty-three hundred and above. And so on this original, this map is, was created for, you know, light zone zero through light zone three. It, it's not exactly accurate because R six is included in light zone two. But some amalgamation of the green and purple with R six removed is representative of what the commercial multi, or commercial mixed use district will look like. So you can see it is concentrated around our downtown area and our. our downtown area and our primary uh commercial road corridors. Gray and purple, that's correct. Yeah, so this, you can see here, this is actually R six, so that would not be included. But some of the M I C uh and C M U would continue to be a part of it. I think there may be some R six in here too. That would not, yeah, that would not be included. But that does give you something of a sense of of where it is. I apologize, we don't have that updated. We will by the January meeting. So you'd be looking at a map with the, with all the correct districts. So again, the current proposal does have those three districts which I've described versus the original proposal, which included. Uh, we, we hadn't really discussed regulating within the residential districts, but we had been uh planning to put them in a zone. The current proposal does not address uh the residential zoning districts other than with the residential transition zone. So lighting zones are kind of the overarching uh component in terms of, you know, where does the ordinance apply? And so the, the, the ordinance as it's currently written would apply very specifically within those areas. And for it to apply anywhere else or for it to apply to less, these zones would have to change in some way or another. So there is a section within the ordinance that covers exemptions and exceptions from the ordinance. The original M L O, M L O proposal established that list. The current proposal makes modest changes. These are primarily based around things like, you know, low voltage outdoor lighting is exempt from the standards in the ordinance. So it's the types of things that the ordinance is not necessarily built to regulate. And we can uh look very specifically at the ordinance if, if we needed to around exemptions, but they are what I would consider to be a relatively standard list. So lighting controls, there were two main components around lighting controls in the model light ordinance. One was an automatic switching requirement and one was an automatic light reduction requirement. Uh, the automatic switching requirement uh basically can be described as um requiring that lights not turn on too early and that they turn off at daybreak. So, you know, not before dusk, not after daybreak. And that that be adjusted according to daylight savings as it needs to be. The automatic li- light reduction requirements are more related to a broad curfew that would be a component of lighting review for projects throughout the city. And it basically required an incremental reduction in lighting on sites after that established curfew. So if the curfew was eleven o'clock, the automatic light reduction requirements would require that lighting be reduced by, you know, thirty percent or some other number at that time. The current proposal eliminates the automatic lighting reduction requirements uh and keeps the switching requirements. So it basically keeps the requirements for switching that they not turn on before dusk, that they not turn off before or that they turn off at daybreak. Uh, but that it, it doesn't uh additionally establish any kind of curfew at which point lighting would be required to be reduced. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit as we get towards the end of this about some of the broad reasons for, you know, staff making some of these recommendations. A lot of them honestly have to do with the uh, the size of our department and the capacity that we would have to enforce, um, you know, more intricate regulations. So um one of the, so these next two are, I think, you know, the real meat and potatoes of the lighting ordinance. And that is establishing an overall lumen limit for a site. And then the second one is establishing limits for offsite impacts. So the overall lumen limit is, you know, kind of a cap on the total amount of light measured by lumens that a commercial site could use to light their site. In the original M L O proposal, each lighting zone established a limit. It's measured either by parking space or per square foot of hardscape. L Z zero is the most restrictive and it had incremental increases up through L Z three. So the current proposal similarly uses the light zoning uh for establishing the limits. It uses the parking space or square foot method. It associates the L Z zero standards with the natural resource san- zone. And it uses the L Z three standards for the our uh residential transition and the commercial multi use uh or multifamily zone. So it, it uses the lowest standard for the natural resource stand zone. And it uses the, the most uh la- uh the, the most lenient standard for the residential transition and the commercial multifamily. Um, so it, it does cap though in both cases, the total lumen allowed onsite, which we currently don't have. We don't have any cap of any sort for onsite lumens. Um, but it for, for us as staff, it establishes uh, you know, one level that unless we are talking about a parcel that's um adjacent to or impacted by the natural resource zone would be following one particular limit. And again, it's based on per square foot or parking space count. So it's really looking at hardscape again. Um, the second one, which again, the meat and potatoes parts um are the offsite impacts. These are based on bug ratings which are associated with lights. Any light that, um, as I understand that you buy for a commercial use is going to have a bug rating. And the original M L O used the bug ratings and it established standards per the districts. Again, with the incremental increase from lighting zone zero through lighting zone three. Uh, the current proposal uses um the uh, sorry, y'all. The current proposal uses uh the bug rating also. Um, it establishes standards per the district. And uh associates again lighting zone zero standards for the natural resource zone. Uh, and L Z three standards for the commercial multifamily zone. And then it uses a blend of standards to minimize its tax on adjacent residential for the residential transition zone. So it looks particularly bug stands for backlighting, uplighting and glare. And so it uses particularly a little slightly more restrictive standards for like backlighting and glare ratings on lights that would be in that fifty foot uh near the um commercial multifamily zone. So then um the performance method was a second approach to um the uh uh, the, the uh way of measuring um how much light could be used on a site and how the bug ratings would be interpreted. Just a second, just a second. So the performance method um is not included in the current proposal. So it's much more complex. Uh, it's not the same sort of just interpretive method. Excuse me, that the um uh, I forget what they call the other method that we're using. They don't call it the performance method, but um, I'm sorry.
Prescriptive.
Yeah, prescriptive. Thank you. So it's it's not included in the current ordinance. I, the next section of significance is the uh special permit lighting. This uh in the M L O establishes a list of high intensity special and pur- purpose uh nonconforming uses which require special permits, um think ball fields uh and other things along those lines. And it establishes a process whereby that permit request is made. And this is basically unchanged with um reflections that uh uh indicate the elimination of the performance method. And then the existing lighting section, this is uh basically, it's kind of like the nonconformant section. It's the section that speaks to existing nonconforming lighting. If we were to put this ordinance in place, what would be the rules guiding when and in what situations that those, those lighting features would have to be upgraded to meet the standards of the, of the current ordinance. So you can see that there were a bunch, there were a number of, of uh components to the M L O, including the sunset, which was just a time limited. Uh, after this point, all um uh uh components need to be brought up. I would note that the lighting subcommittee had not proposed including the sunset standard. And then there were maintenance standards and site expansion and renovation standards. And uh the current proposal also establishes those same triggers. The uh triggers are tied uh more directly to how we treat nonconforming structures and site features elsewhere in the city code. So we have some nonconforming language around landscaping standards and our natural resource standards. There are um, they typically are less restrictive than what was proposed in the M L O, but they align uh directly with what is elsewhere in our zoning code. So for instance, if someone were to come in and say, I'm getting ready to renovate this building, uh, I'm going to spend seventy five percent of the tax uh value on renovation. We would be saying, y- you're going to need to bring up your, the um the uh uh site to current standards. And that's going to include lighting and site plantings and all that good stuff. If uh, the um you know, let's say it came in and they were only spending twenty five percent of uh the site value. If we adopted the M L O proposal, then that would trigger lighting replacement, but it wouldn't trigger uh compliance with our um standards for vegetation and whatnot. So the goal in reviewing this section and pushing and pulling on the um triggers was to align it across the zoning ordinance so that when someone comes in, they're either triggering compliance with the ordinance by what they're doing to their site or they're not. And we used the existing standards in the ordinance to try and guide that. Uh, and then last part is just the tables and definitions. These are the um components of the uh ordinance that you know, th- they give the bug ratings for the lighting and things like that. There are some additional components in the tables. I think one of the things that the lighting subcommittee had keyed into was related to some of the tables and definitions. There are some additional uh allowances for certain uses. Uh, outdoor retail being one of them, um vehicle display, gas stations, some things along those lines. Um, so again, primary changes to the tables are just uh reflections to uh highlight the changes to the lighting zones from the zero through three to the um natural resource residential transition and commercial multifamily zones. So to kind of, you know, quickly highlight what were uh staff's focus in putting this in place. The, the lighting ordinance is very specifically focused on the city's commercial areas. Uh, it does address natural resources via the stream buffer and um uh the, the elevation component. And then it does specifically address kind of that mixed use transition to residential. Um, and then the last two, so like I said, the meat and potatoes pieces from my perspective are the lumen limits and uh the bug ratings on lights and uh impacting the uh potential of light to have an impact on adjacent parcels. There is a lot to the lighting ordinance, you know, one of the goals certainly in looking through this, you know, on a typical year, we have, we've had a lot of development uh approvals this year, but as it relates to zoning ordinance review and the staffing levels we have, you know, this past year, we had a little over a hundred and seventy five zoning permits that we issued over the course of the year. Um, so that's, somebody's gotten site plan approval and they've come in and said, I want to uh, you know, do this um commercial use in this building, or I want to build this house, or I want to build this commercial building. Uh, so our review and our team is built to kind of process that kind of volume. This model light ordinance obviously was written, you know, for a whole variety of, of communities. And I think what we tried to do was uh really zero in on the components that we could put in place, that staff could really uh accurately manage in the review process, um that we could explain relatively straightforward. And that could have a positive impact on, on uh lighting within new commercial development and within redevelopment um of existing commercial sites in the city. So with that, that's all I had. I know that is a quick overview of a big document, which is why we wanted to just do a draft and not ask you all to try and take action at this point. But uh, if there are uh questions at this point, I will, along with uh the rest of the crew, attempt to answer them.
So I will, um, given that it's late.
Yeah.
Meetings, um, there's a lot to discuss with this. Um, the lighting ordinance committee was supposed to meet on Friday. I did not get out the public notice uh in time. And so we'll be looking to reschedule the lighting ordinance committee, who will really chew through this. They've already begun. There's been some good email exchange, um with different feedback on this. Which I think is pretty um, you know, nuanced and primarily focused on things like the special permits and temporary permits and um different triggers for updating uh lighting. There's a couple of technical, um, there's been some questions about uh some technical aspects of the lighting, which would probably be the most impactful if they were to change. But um, I do think that what we've got here uh is a, is a pretty solid draft as uh Lou described. That is intended to simplify from where we started, but also hit these really important areas of focus that were the or what generated the initial discussion and interest in looking at a lighting ordinance from what we have today. So I think we've addressed that. Um, so I do think that we have something we could work with. This is a, a, you know, if uh a condition were to be made that um, you know, an applicant be required to meet the requirements of our draft ordinance. That, you know, even though it hasn't been put in place yet, that would give us something to work with in order to uh steer someone towards a, a satisfying good condition. We've been having conditions that they'd be dark sky compliant. That's very hard to achieve without an ordinance in place. So at least having a draft ordinance in place gives us something to point. That's very hard to achieve without an ordinance in place. So at least having a draft ordinance in place gives us something to point to. But I would just, I would kind of suggest that we steer. Discussion and kind of link the questions and things like that. I'd say we defer that. Let the lighting ordinance committee get back into this. Let us tweak it and let us bring it back to you and build on the knowledge that you got tonight from Lou's presentation. But really kind of save some of the healthier discussion. But with that, also open it up for any real pertinent questions.
No, I agree. And I would like to thank Neil and his his committee and city staff for really. Diving into this, dissecting that model ordinance and really finding out what pertains to to what. What we're trying to achieve and and then, you know, also the business community had some input. So I'd just like to thank everybody that's been involved. Knowing, knowing that it's a momentous task.
Well, if we look at this project that we were talking about, that we kind of table till the end of the meeting. With this ordinance coming up for review. And we had concerns and there is no dark sky. Can we? Add a condition that when this ordinance comes in, if it's in. A stage in their project development, they have to comply. I mean, what would you, what.
Yeah, final site plan. If if a light. If a lighting ordinance is, if a new lighting ordinance is adopted prior to final site plan approval, then the final site plan would be compliant with the. I mean, I I can't say if that's.
Something the developer would agree to, but.
Well, I I don't know about the legal, you know, there may be some kind of weird legal thing that would prevent you from doing that, but.
Well, don't they get standing when they first apply?
They would, so that condition would be something that would like supersede that if they agreed to it. The thing with conditions is they they always have to agree to it. So once they agree to it, it's almost like anything goes. That's what we've kind of.
Agree, but this this guy's in a disadvantage that his internet connection is not too good.
Well, I think he may, so we've asked him to dial in. And it looks like, well, yeah, they've dialed in, so we. So we good with this item? We want to go back to.
Go back, yeah.
Okay.
And thank you, Lou, for that.
Good job, Lou.
Yeah, absolutely. To just to fleece out what Matt's saying a little bit further. John, you're absolutely right. So a. A project is vested under the current development. Now they can choose, they can choose to be. Reviewed under any new development standards that are adopted once they've applied, but they have a. Permit choice is what it's called. That once they've applied, they have that choice. They don't have to abide by a new regulation. Now, that's just sort of a standard overarching. To Matt's point, if if they did agree to a condition that said, yes, if by final site plan, you all have adopted this lighting ordinance. We agree to go along with it. They could agree to that condition. To the 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 big thing with conditions is that if they don't agree. They they don't have to, they don't have to agree. There's no requirement that they do so.
Well, are they held hostage by any group that says, well, if you don't agree to it, then you're out.
There there's only one group that can do that.
Well, they're the final decision anyway. It's just a recommendation, right?
Do you all want to hear from the applicant?
Neil had, Neil, who's committee chair on the lighting ordinance, had one comment.
I just wanted fifteen seconds. Matt, you and the rest of the staff did a great job of taking the. Model ordinance, stripping away the chaff. And coming up with something that's manageable and understandable by any developer approaching a project in the city.
I will, I'll deflect that to Lou. But thank you. Lou did a.
Okay, if we go back, then to, we're gonna go back to our agenda item, which was the C Z D.
Sanjay, are you there or? Amit?
Hello, this is Amit.
Hey, we're back on your item. And I had seen Sanjay pop up, maybe he had leave again. So he he's on the phone. Are you hearing us in real time or is it delayed?
I think it's real time now and I don't know what was going on.
The phone call worked. So we've resolved the delay.
Yes, yes, perfect.
Does anybody have any questions then for?
Well, let's get back to one of the questions at hand is, some folks on this board are concerned about the lighting. Of your project. And it was brought up that. We don't have an ordinance that defines dark sky. But some folks would still like you to volunteer to whatever that is. I don't know what that is.
Perhaps comply with a draft ordinance?
That would be the best way to position it now, yes.
I was gonna say, I think folks here might be asking you to try and comply or comply with a draft ordinance that you've never seen.
Right, and that's, you know, this is the first that we've heard of dark sky and I apologize. I think I heard someone's comment about, you know, we, I was. Unsure of what that meant. Well, in the few hours that we spent, I actually kind of Googled and. Am very delighted that that is something that City of Hendersonville is actually. Going for because here in the big city of Charlotte, I'm blinded by a lot of lights. So we will do our best to comply with that. Again, this box that we're building. It is going to be a long-term extended stay. It's a very beautiful box. They've got a couple around Asheville now. So however, we can satisfy the needs, we're more than willing to. Work with you. I did say we contacted Duke Energy and they're probably the worst to contact like someone also mentioned. But we're gonna work with civil, go back to architect and see where we can make these Hilton may even already be on top of it in other markets. So it's a matter of us kind of reaching back out to them and seeing, you know, where they have worked with other municipalities. To see what we can do.
So he he does not have to agree to this tonight. But it sounds like there's some general interest in working with staff and looking at the ordinance. And so they could determine between this meeting and the city council meeting, whether they would fully commit. To this recommendation, if that were to be what you so chose. They meet whatever ordinance is in the jurisdiction they're building in.
And and then there was an issue about design. And there's no design requirement here, but. Some folks seem to want to inflict that on this project. And I'd like to hear his comment on that, if he's willing to accept any design guidelines.
Amit, did you hear that?
I I did. As far as design goes, we, this is. I don't want to say a prototypical box because we are gonna go a little above what Hilton is requiring. And also, we're going to try to take what the developers in Asheville have done on their home twos. And try to replicate the design. So it's gonna be a very subtle, but still very beautiful box. From from what I can hear. And in the meantime, if I know we've got some elevations, we can work with the staff to get those over to. Whoever would be interested in seeing those.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Any other discussion? John, are you good with the tree board as well? I know that was another.
I can live with with that one. Just as I knew that was the third one that we were.
Of the city council.
Sure thing. We will work with the tree board as well and let them review our landscaping plan if there's. Any particular plants, foliage, anything that we can do to beautify Hendersonville, we are all for it. Being a city boy, every time I come up to Hendersonville, I absolutely fall back in love with it and eventually do see myself retiring or. Having my family up there for the long term out of the city. So again, even our Hampton Inn over there, we are working very hard. That's eighty-one build, I think. And, you know, we have continuously reinvested and we plan to do the same with this. Asset that we're building there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I I'm okay with without the design standards. If that's a hanging point to where we can get a motion. I just don't want to end up with just like I said, a straight.
Out of those, I mean, there's one on the airport road that has been probably the newest out of those, but like he said, they're more of a. Multi-night stay. I mean, they have a kitchen and, I mean, it's. All set up for most of the part of these designs.
They are catering to the, oh, sorry. They they are catering with this product to the multitude of guests from the retirees. To the millennials that may be coming in. So I think Hilton has found a really good balance between a Hampton Inn. And a long-term customer and what they're looking for functionality space. So with people that may be coming to move to the area and need kind of a short-term place to stay. Hilton has tried to really push the envelope to create a welcoming space, a a nice. Natural environment. And so we really look forward to getting this product to the community and and seeing, getting some good feedback from it.
So I'm gonna butt in and suggest, because it's, I heard Amit say that they do have some elevations. You could just make a a condition be that they share an elevation of the the hotel. So it's not a design standard of any sort. It's just a request that as a part of the approval process that an elevation be shared.
And is the applicant committing that this is gonna be a home to suites and not something else?
Yes, sir. We are fully vested since twenty eighteen. And just because of. There's no excuses, but a lot changed from eighteen to where we are today as just beyond the pandemic too. But the financing world and and people's demand, travel, tourism, everything's changed for the good. But I can guarantee, yes, this will be a home, home to suites by Hilton.
Going back to the design standards discussion, the similar to. You know, we've got a section of design standards from highway mixed use and chapter eighteen is zoning code. But this applicant hasn't seen, just like the draft lighting ordinance hasn't been seen. Sounds like there, you know, there is some interest or some discussion about. You know, trying to push in that direction to meet those standards. And then this applicant would have the time between now and city council to review that with staff. And then decide if they want to comply or not, or agree to it or not, or agree to parts of it or not, other parts of it. We saw that with, you know. Half moon, there's a lot of that back and forth. Well, we'll do this, you know, here's how we can meet this goal of the comprehensive plan, that type of thing. But here's. Here's where this is gonna make it too costly or whatever it is. So there was some push and pull. That certainly seems like. That that's the type of thing that staff has been kind of working towards to improve the final outcome on some developments as recently.
Certainly you do do that. I just don't want to see it mandated by a motion here that they must comply with some kind of design standard.
So I think, so it's not a, it's a recommendation, right? So if that recommendation. If you don't make that recommendation, if you say. Work with staff to try and comply, could could do that, but that's not quite the same. I think if you make it a recommendation, then it sets it up for a for city council. To then, all right, it's on their radar that this is what planning board wanted to do. By however many, whatever the vote would be. And so then it's on the developer to then pursue whether they can meet that condition or not.
Do we want to move forward with a motion or do we want to? If I make a motion, it's gonna leave that out.
There's not a whole lot to deny.
Gets back to, ask the question, is that allowed by right? Stickler for that one.
Right. You know, I think that if we look at like the lighting or you want to do something that architectural design. Then that's gotta be addressed ASAP before more comes in.
Well, we we, right, we probably should not have zoning districts without design standards, architectural. Right. But we do have a draft lighting ordinance that that we're looking at. So maybe, you know, perhaps this, you know. Having design standards in all our zoning districts is something we need to look at in the future. But I understand where you're coming from.
I don't have any issue with putting in, what was the word you used?
Design standard?
No, no, reservation or whatever, that the lighting ordinance. I don't have any. I'm not against that or a consideration.
I'll go ahead and make a motion if you're looking for one.
I think, I think we could work with that.
I would move the planning board recommend to city council to approve the adoption of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville. Changing the zoning designation on the subject property pin ninety-five seventy-nine dash fifty-six dash seventy-nine fifty-six. From PCD planned commercial development zoning to PCD, C Z D. Plan commercial development conditional zoning district based on the site plan submitted by the applicant. Finding that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plans, future land use map designation of high intensity neighborhood. That the zoning is rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. Map amendment is consistent with the twenty thirty comprehensive plan, chapter eight, land use and development. Two, that the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses. And number three, that it is reasonable in the public's interest to approve the application. Because it will advance goals you're headed to the comprehensive plan.
Uh, no, no conditions intended. Okay, I will note that on the slide, we've revised that same same motion, same language. But we added in after subject to. The site plan, that it would also be subject to the following condition. So so that there's a space in there if. The the discussion on this motion leads to any amendments.
I don't have any conditions.
Okay. I'm open for discussion.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Okay, so nobody would like to second it? John says he's open to discussion on his motion. We have some discussion there and then perhaps an amended motion and a second.
I think you get into this dark skies thing, thing that doesn't exist. Right now, even as a draft, it's gonna. Cause either delay or it's gonna make that move forward very quickly. If you want that to work, you're gonna drive that. Now to some level, maybe the level might just be draft. But but that's. You know, we're at, we're at a point where we're looking at these good things, but we're not ready for it. We're also at a point where we're seeing that we've got some flaws in the planning. Whereas we have ways people can build structures by zoning without design conditions. So there's a lot of holes in this.
Well, the city council made those decisions, past ones, you know, years ago. And those rules are in but in place today. You can't stop someone from doing what's allowed by right, as I see it.
So I will say that there's some, the comprehensive plan is also, you know, a guiding document here. And this is something we talked about as staff a lot. That, you know, mixed use, good form, good design is all in the comprehensive plan. But they did not then take that next step of then rezoning certain areas of the city to make them fall in line with those zone. We do have zoning districts that have design standards. They just aren't widely used. There's the pockets of mixed use, especially the Greenville Highway mixed use is the main area where that was actually implemented. So there's some of that out there. And I I think I heard you say that the the lighting, we do have a draft of the lighting orders. What Lou presented was just like an overview, but we actually have a draft ordinance. Just to clarify. We could review a site plan based on the draft ordinance.
Do you expect this draft to be completed? Do you expect this draft to be completed fairly quickly?
Uh, that depends on, you know, the 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 committees and the city council and you guys uh and and how you feel about it, but. We do have a draft ordinance, so just wanted to clarify that.
That probably could be used for this. Uh, I've got problems with the draft. I think Angel reads it would have problems, differing problems. Um, but in terms of being a document that where we can take a couple of small steps and have an ordinance, yeah, it's there.
Um. We we did have a second.
I second.
To to the the motion without any conditions. Is there any further discussion?
Well, seeing that it barely got a second before we have a vote, what condition would anyone here care to discuss to add to it?
I would just say the light draft. I mean, and again, they can comply if they.
Well, are you saying they must comply, or are you saying they just need to look at it and?
It's just a recommendation. It's not a must. It's a recommendation that they.
Recommendation to comply with a draft.
Yeah.
A recommendation.
It would be up to city council to make that a a mandate, as it were.
Which is another, two to three weeks. Is gonna go through city council.
Yeah, exactly.
But again, the developer.
I have no problem with, as long as we're clear that it's.
A recommendation.
Yes.
A recommendation.
You know, but it's not a requirement.
How about the issue of the elevations or who's proposing connecting and then get out before the city council?
Well, again. There's no guideline for any design.
I mean, there are in other zoning districts that have been, I understand. I I get it. I get it. And and like I said, I'm not all that concerned about this, because they are traditionally good-looking buildings aesthetically, um, if it was.
But do we have any instances where we have all these zoning areas that don't have any design restrictions? That something horrible has been built?
Well, look right across the, on King Street. Used to be the Caldwell Banker Building.
The hotel next to this one to the right, you're not gonna win the design award.
No.
The world didn't end either.
Right. And I don't know who's in that building now, but it's just basically a box. With a, I think there's a clock on it.
It's uh, it was sold to um, one of the nonprofit medical groups. Roffins.
All right, so we have a motion. Um, we have a second.
With a recommendation to.
Recommendation that the developer.
Review the lighting ordinance and.
Work with city staff to adopt the draft ordinance, draft lighting ordinance.
To comply.
What about the walkway between the two parking lots? That's a good. Yes. Number two, there must be a walkway combining the day in the country parking lot with this hotel's parking lot.
Good point.
We have a motion with two conditions.
Provide elevations was like a watered-down version of the design standards discussion that was thrown out by Lou.
Right, all right. Provide elevations of the proposed hotel to. Area.
Three, okay.
About elevations prior to city council.
Right, okay.
Good with that. That's it. That clear? Any more discussion?
Sorry, Hunter. I got a vote no on it. It's just not strong enough there. My apologies, but I appreciate your bringing it in, bringing it up and putting it in, but. Okay. I don't get a sense that the developer will do anything, but just reviewing.
Neil, why don't you offer uh what you would be considered a friendly amendment to that standard?
My friendly amendment would be to comply with the current draft as of today. Of the lighting ordinance that the planning department has distributed.
And you don't accept the amendment?
No.
Okay.
It's Neil's move. I mean, it's it's John's motion.
I know, I just wanted to make sure that.
It was a friendly amendment, so he can reject.
A request, and then he rejected it. I just wanted to make sure it was put out there before he voted no.
Legal or fair. Okay, that's just my comment. I got you.
So you feel comfortable you have a draft?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We have three conditions. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion passes one, two, three, four, five to one.